Waterbury.
Sorry, Alicia.
Hello, good morning. This is Pam Health at Waterbury LLC. Docket number two, one, dash, three, two, four, nine, zero, dash, C O N. Again, my name is Hearing Officer Novi and I would like to welcome everybody to this. If I look down is because I read off paper the old fashioned way. So I am listening and probably taking notes on paper as well, but I will be looking off to the side. And looking down. Pam Health at Waterbury LLC, Pam Health and Prospect Waterbury, Inc. Are the applicants in this matter? Seeking a certificate of need for the establishment of a healthcare facility pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section nineteen A, dash, six thirty-eight, paren, small A, paren, one. Specifically, Pam seeks to establish a forty-two-bed chronic disease hospital providing inpatient physical rehabilitation care. Throughout this proceeding, I'll be, I'll be interchangeably referring to Pam Health at Waterbury LLC as Pam and Prospect Waterbury as Waterbury Hospital for brevity purposes. Today is November second, twenty twenty-two. My name is Alicia Novi. Kimberly Martone, the Executive Director of OHS designated me to serve as Hearing Officer for this matter. True on all motions and recommended findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Section one forty-nine of Public Act number twenty-one, dash, two, as amended by Public Act number twenty-two, dash, three, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make good faith effort to state your name, title, your name and title at the onset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or a series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is held pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section nineteen A, dash, six thirty-nine, A, paren, small E. As such, this matter constitutes a contested case under the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act and will be conducted in accordance herewith. Office of Healthcare's, or Office of Health Strategy staff is here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and will be asking the applicant witnesses questions. I'm going to ask each staff, each staff person assisting with questions today to identify, to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name, and OHS title.
Good morning. Stephen Lazarus, L A Z A R U S, and I'm the Certificate of Need Program Supervisor.
Good morning. My name is Annalise Biella, F as in Frank, A I E L L S, and I'm a planning analyst.
Okay. Also present is Maida Capozzi, staff member for our agency, who is assisting with the hearing logistics and will also gather the names for public comment. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded and the video will, will also be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that, related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Healthcare Strategy are available for review through our Certificate of Need Con portal, which is accessible on the Office of Healthcare Strategies Con webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section nineteen A, dash, six thirty-nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom has hopefully notified you in the course of entering this hearing, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time. All right. The Con portal contains the pre-hearing table of record of this case. At the time of its filing, which was Monday, the exhibits were identified in the table as A to V, although there are some others that I will get to. The applicant is hereby notice that I am taking administrative notice of the following documents. The statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, facilities and services inventory, OHS acute care hospital discharge database, and the All Player Claims Database, Claims Data. I may also utilize, sorry, I may also take administrative notice of the health reporting systems, HRS, financial and utilization data, and also prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant to this matter. All right. At this point, I'd like to ask the counsel for applicants to please identify themselves for the record.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novi. I'm Patrick Monahan of the law firm of Pret, Porto, Reese, and Colwell. I represent the applicants in this matter. And I can certainly introduce the four witnesses at the appropriate time. It, when they, when you call for them to step up for testimony, or I can do that now, whichever your preference is.
We will get to the witnesses shortly.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to, um, there are two intervenors in this case and I will refer to counsel for intervener for Hospital for Special Care and then counsel for intervener for Gaylord Hospital. We'll go in that order throughout the hearing so that you know how this will go. All right. So will the counsel for intervener Hospital for Special Care, please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Novi and OGA staff, Stephen Cowherd, Coleman and Comley LLC, representing Intervener Hospital for Special Care.
Thank you. Will the counsel for intervener Gaylord Hospital, please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Lori Letty. We're at the Kalina on behalf of intervener Gaylord Hospital and I'm here with my colleague, Stephanie Sobkowiac, and that's S O B like boy, K O W. S, sorry.
I A K.
I A K. I got lost there for a second. And, and we are, as well, she's from the Kalina as well.
Okay. Um, which one of you should I direct questions to?
I will be handling the hearing.
Okay. And I'm sorry, your last name again?
It's Letty, L E D D like David Y.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Attorney Monahan, are there any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the noticed documents?
There are no objections to the table of record and the documents that you just announced as additional noticed documents. As a preliminary matter, I would point out that I did submit a request to add additional documents to the record, which I would ask that the hearing officers take judicial cognizance or administrative cognizance of as public documents. And my hope is that those could be deemed part of the record so that we don't have to delay with any particular witness to try to go at them one at a time. I do not expect to spend a lot of time with any single one of them, but given some of the petitioner content, we've felt that some of these additional public documents were relevant.
Okay. I was going to address that shortly, but as we are speaking about it now, would you have any objection to the documents submitted at five forty-four yesterday admitted as a single exhibit?
Not at all.
Okay. All right. So with that, um, I would like to identify, um, I would like to mark all identified and marked exhibits as full exhibits at this time. In addition, I would like to add that we will, we may have a public comment updated if there are any submitted today. All right. The attorney, Cowherd, do you have any additional exhibits you would like to enter at this time?
Uh, Hearing Officer Novi, I see that the twenty twenty-one MedPAC report is already part of the applicant's submission and reference therein. That would be certainly one that, you know, I would want to make sure is part of the, you know, administrative record in this proceeding. But beyond that, nothing beyond what we've submitted in our prefile and referenced in those prefiles through either links or footnotes to the testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Attorney Letty, um, how about you? Any additional exhibits at this time?
Not at this time. I, I wasn't sure. I didn't check the portal this morning to make sure that our petition was uploaded as is on the actual exhibit list as well. Just wanted to make sure that happened and otherwise we have nothing else, nothing new to add.
If the petition is not on the portal, it will be, um, it will be up and it will be on the list that comes out later.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I would also like to state that OHS had planned to upload some exported data from the All Player Claims Database, but we were unable to get it uploaded before the hearing and we will upload that information after the hearing. We will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I would like to advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel have already been addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure, reassure you that we have reviewed your application, completeness responses, and prefile testimony, and I will do so again many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. All participants should mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try to shut up the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video not disabled will be accessible to all participants into this hearing. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in, in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her time to speak. Registration for public comment will take place at two P M. and is scheduled to start at three P M. If the technical portion of this hearing is not completed by three P M., public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment as OHS may have follow-up questions based on the public comment. Are there any housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start? All right. Hearing none, we're going to go ahead. The, um, I will start with the applicant. Is there an opening statement from the applicant?
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novi and OHS panel members. Pat Monahan, again, speaking briefly in an opening statement on behalf of the witnesses because I think the witnesses really have the important information to say, but I'd like to just point out maybe three or four points as an opening. First, the applicants, to make it very clear, are here because we believe as applicants that we have demonstrated a need, yes, a licensed chronic disease hospital, but in particular, a certified inpatient rehabit, rehabilitation hospital or as certified by Medicare, an I R F, an inpatient rehabilitation facility. And that is a special, specialized facility that does not exist in the primary service area. And there is only one other freestanding of I R F in the state, which is Mount Sinai, which is not here as an intervener, as we all know. Nor are the other I R F units in acute care hospitals here as interveners, as we all know. So I wanted to make it sort of clear that that is a specialized level of service that is the subject of this application and avoid this, uh, any kind of misunderstood blending of general rehabilitation care in all of its terms. On the second point that I'd like to, to talk about, when we say we believe we have demonstrated need, we have put forth, and I stand by having read from cover to cover the statewide health plan, and that the OHS formerly OCA is able to consider, it does not have its hands legally tied to any particular methodology for determining how a chronic disease hospital need or an I R F need must be calculated. To do so would be to put blinders on. You are able, in my view of the reading of your own plan, and I quote from page one oh five, uh, from the night, from the two thousand twenty most recent supplement that discusses unmet need. In future planning efforts, OCA will continue its examination of available data to determine how best to address the unmet needs of residents and to assist providers in their transformations to meet those needs. My point simply being, we ask you respectfully, consider the sound methodologies that we have put forth to demonstrate need, recognizing, uh, we're asking you to consider, and you can and obviously will consider precedent, but there is no law precluding you from being open-minded about other sound, rational, compelling methodologies. Third, I'd like to just point out, there was some, if not innuendo, maybe direct statements about the distinction between the not-for-profit world that of the interveners and the for-profit portion of this joint venture of Pam Health, a national company. And in that regard, I really would like to focus on having at the start of this hearing, OHS recognize, we came in as applicants not critical of any care being provided by any provider in the state of Connecticut. In fact, complimenting the care and wanting to be part of the continuum of care. And in that regard, Pam Health, indeed a partner with Waterbury Health in this, has treated, as they will explain, around the country, although not in Connecticut, many Medicaid populations, has many charitable care policies. But we have come in here in addition to Waterbury Health's own community aid and charitable care and Medicaid services to provide an optimal service for a patient who qualifies for that service to receive an optimal outcome. In other words, our focus was on the patient. Unfortunately, when the dust settles after reading all the petition papers, I believe it is the not-for-profit interveners have turned this into a financial issue. And, and we stand by the patient optimal care is the lead point in our application. And finally, when you put all of these very general points together with what I think you already have in the application and in the completeness responses and what you will hear in testimony and in cross-examination, I believe you will find that this application indeed satisfies the statutory criteria that you are obligated to consider. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, if, uh, Mr. Attorney Monahan, if you could please identify all the individuals by name and title who are going to testify on behalf of the application. They should each turn on their camera as they are identified and I will swear them in after they are identified.
Okay. Um, at this, before I do that, at this moment, I'd like to make sure Kristin Smith is on camera. And do we have Dr. Adam Buhrer? And I'm going to introduce them, but I want to be sure media-wise that we have everyone. Dr. Buhrer, are you on camera? There you are. Lester, please join us here. Okay. I would like now to introduce the four identified witnesses in the prefiled testimony who are all prepared to adopt their written testimony as directed by you or asked by you. Um, the first witness would be Kristin Smith, who is the Senior Executive Vice President and Chief Transformation Officer for Pam Health. Um, we also will have the testimony of Dr. Justin Lundby, um, who, uh, M D, who is the C E O of Waterbury Hospital and Waterbury Health. Um, we will have the prefiled testimony of Dr. Adam Buhrer, who is the Executive Vice President and Chief Medical Officer of Pam Health. And I should point out the order of things. Dr. Buhrer will precede Dr. Lundby in the testimony. I, I, I put those two names out of order. And then our fourth witness will be Mr. Lester Shindell, who has been a former C E O of Waterbury Hospital and is now operating in a consultant capacity for this project. And each of them should be in view and can, uh, as however you proceed, adopt their written testimony.
All right. So at this time, I would like everybody who was identified to please raise your right hand so I can swear you in at this time. Sorry, I've, I've come from judicial, so I will raise mine as well. Um, do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm as the case may be that the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence that you shall give or already have given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
You.
All right. If I could have everybody, um, I'm going to go in, in order singly so I can hear you say that. Ms. Smith?
I do.
All right. Uh, Dr. Lundby?
I do.
Um, uh, Dr. Burdick?
I do.
And then, um, Dr. Uh, or Mr. Shindel?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. All right, everybody. Okay, the applicants may now proceed with their testimony, starting with their first witness.
For our first witness, we would like to ask Kristin Smith to testify. Now, okay, may we begin?
Of course.
Okay. Ms. Smith, you, of course, submitted a prefiled testimony and, and I know that you have no intention of reading that and reiterating that. However, do you have additional comments that you believe are appropriate to add to your testimony based on your review of the materials that were submitted by the petitioners?
Yes, I do.
Do you please express those?
Absolutely. Um, first, I just want to say good morning to Hearing Officer Novi and the OHS panel. My name's Kristin Smith. I'm the Senior Executive Vice President and Chief Transformation Officer for Pam Health. In my submitted testimony, which I will not repeat, um, I go through my experience and will just briefly share that with all of you. At this time, I'm a physical therapist clinically. I've had twenty-five-plus years of experience in post-acute care setting, the first of which started at the Ohio State University Medical Center for fifteen years, a large academic nonprofit organization. Um, and then moved into corporate positions and have been with Pam Health since two thousand and sixteen. In my role, I serve as the Chief Transformation Officer. I oversee development projects, Pam Water, Pam Waterbury being one of them, as well as overseeing our clinical services that relates to nursing, therapy, respiratory therapy services, quality of care in our hospitals, case management, and other areas for the company. We are very excited to present information today to the group that defends or supports our application. And where I'm going to focus, my opening remarks are specifically in relation to reading the filings of both Gaylord and the Hospital for Specialty Care. Um, I know Pat started with demonstrating the need and there were several things that came up in the, in those submissions that I think is very important that we articulate as the applicant. When we think of demonstrating a need for a service, and I, I should also just mention the fact that, you know, Pam Health oversees both LTAC operates, both LTAC and inpatient rehabilitation hospitals or facilities. So we have over sixty-five hospitals across the country. Fifty percent of those are long-term acute care hospitals licensed as LTAC, similar to Gaylord and the Health Care Specialty Hospital. And then fifty percent of those are acute inpatient rehabilitation hospitals. I think it's very important to note also that we have those same services, LTAC and inpatient rehabilitation hospitals in specific markets. San Antonio, we've got two LTACs. We have five inpatient rehabilitation hospitals. Corpus Christi, we have an LTAC with an inpatient rehabilitation hospital. And the reason I'm demonstrating or articulating that is the fact that these services are very different. They're licensed, different. They're regulated, different by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, CMS, and paid differently. And they exist in similar markets and in the same markets as part of the continuum of care of services that are offered to patients in need of services. So when we look at the need for services, the underlying factor needs to really focus on the types of services that are offered in the area. And when you look at our twenty-three-town proposed service area, there are no inpatient rehabilitation hospital services, none in our proposed service area. So let me just, for everybody's sake, just to clarify or maybe expand upon what I mean by different services, how they're regulated, how they're licensed. Back in the early eighties, when the short-term acute care hospitals were transitioning from a cost-based structure to a prospective payment system, Medicare had identified that there are different services that are offered that are not short-term acute care services, thus being post-acute care services. LTACs, inpatient rehabilitation units or hospitals, and psych services. Medicare had to define those services because those services are very unique and distinct services. Medicare for the LTAC defined it as a twenty-five-day length of stay. So in order to be classified, this is classification criteria that Medicare set forth. In order to be classified and paid under the LTAC prospective payment system, an LTAC in their cost report year has to meet an average of twenty-five-day length of stay for those patients. That does not apply for rehab hospitals or units. That does not apply for psych. Medicare established for rehab hospitals or units. At that point in time, what was called the seventy-five percent rule. Now sixty percent rule. Meaning in order to be classified as an inpatient rehabilitation unit or hospital, sixty percent of the patients must meet thirteen diagnoses and/or comorbidities that reflect those thirteen diagnoses requiring rehabilitation services. Sixty percent rule does not apply to LTACs. So just the basis of, of law, the CMS in the Social Security Act defining those two different services demonstrates the distinction between the two. Twenty-five-day length of stay, sixty percent rule. I'll also add that in addition to classification criteria, Medicare set forth in the Medicare Benefit Policy Manual very, very specific coverage criteria. And the coverage criteria for inpatient rehabilitation hospitals or I R Fs requires that each patient we admit to our hospital must meet an intensity of therapy services defined as three hours of therapy at a minimum of five days a week and requiring two of three therapies, or I'm going to say rehabilitation because I think people are really confusing rehabilitation services. So rehabilitation services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy. In order to meet coverage criteria for inpatient rehabilitation, patients must require that intense level of rehabilitation services and require two- and require two of the three therapies, one of which must be PT or OT. That does not apply to LTACs. In addition, we have coverage criteria that requires us to do a very, very thorough pre-admission screening assessment. The pre-admission screening assessment must be completed by a clinical navigator and must be signed by the rehabilitation physician forty-eight hours prior to admission to make sure that each patient meets this specific criteria that is defined for inpatient rehabilitation. In addition to the two out of three therapies, five days a week, three hours a day, Medicare also states that that patient must demonstrate significant practical improvement demonstrated from their baseline level of function to their admitting level of function and the anticipated goals that we set forth for that patient to achieve during their inpatient rehabilitation stay with the ultimate goal to discharge home. That is not required by the LTACs. In addition, that physical medicine and rehabilitation physician must evaluate that patient on day four, create a four-day plan of care that integrates our rehabilitation nursing, PT, OT, and/or speech into the four-day plan of care, estimate that length of stay, intensity of services, and conduct a weekly team meeting with required members of the team to be there. Very, very specific coverage criteria for inpatient rehabilitation that we adhere to. So when we look at the continuum of care, and as Pat said, you know, the two interveners, by no means are we saying they're, you know, they're not providing high-quality or rehabilitation services. Rehabilitation services are offered across the continuum of care. In a short-term acute care hospital, in an LTAC such as the two interveners, in an acute inpatient rehabilitation hospital such as we're proposing in this application, in a skilled nursing facility, there's rehabilitation services. Home healthcare offers rehabilitation services as well as outpatient. So those services are provided throughout the continuum of care, and patients need certain services and rehabilitation throughout their recovery process. But what we're proposing and offering is very distinct and different services. And I'll also just wrap up in the fact that with the LTACs adhering to the twenty-five-day length of stay, it was evident Gaylord's length of stay is twenty-eight days. The healthcare specialty hospital length of stay is one hundred days. Our average length of stay is thirteen days. We provide high-intensity therapy services with the goal to return home. Our discharge to community is seventy-eight percent. I have information from the Advisory Board data from Q2 2020 to Q4 2021 that shows Medicare discharged to community percentage for Gaylord, fifty percent. Hospital for Specialty Care Services discharged to community, fifty-nine point two percent. It's clear that, given the length of stay and the differences on those discharged to community rates, that we provide an intense level of therapy services in a short amount of time with the goal to get patients home. And again, this level of service is currently non-existent in the proposed twenty-three-state area that we are proposing for our inpatient rehabilitation hospital. As far as, as need, I think it's important to recognize when we look at need, you have to look at the types of services, which is what I explained. These types of services are not offered. So I think also what was brought up is duplication of existing services. There are no duplication of existing services. They don't, they don't exist currently. The other point I want to raise that was brought up is financial viability or financial feasibility of this project. PM Health and Waterbury Health are partnered, and we're excited to bring this new service offering to this area. PM Health is seventy percent JV partner, Waterbury Health is thirty percent. Our seventy percent PM Health funds the entire project. Waterbury Health does not have to contribute any capital monetary contribution as the JV partner at thirty percent. And according to our CFO in relation to this project, and as it relates to PM Health from a financial feasibility, we currently have a hundred and fifty million dollars of revolving line of credit with about eighty million drawn and seventy million available for this project. And a ten-million-dollar line for equipment with, with half of that already available and, yes.
Yeah, stop you. I'm taking notes. I'm sorry, you have a hundred and fifty million dollar revolving line of credit with seventy million available for this project?
Eighty million drawn and seventy million available. And the proposed project is thirty-three million. So there is no concern with the financial feasibility of our capability to bring this project to the area. The last point I want to make is staffing. There were some comments in relation to adequate staffing, availability of nurses, and some details coming through specific to Connecticut, which we all, you know, certainly recognize we've endured it ourselves as a, as a company across, across the country, specifically in the pandemic. Nursing shortages, difficulty with staffing. We have certainly been able to tap into, because we have a lot, we have clinical rotations across the country. We have access to a lot of the schools that generate nursing. We're actually starting a CNA program in San Antonio to train and, and teach individuals to become certified nursing assistants. And from a staffing perspective, we have twenty-five hundred nurses and therapists available across the country. We've created our own traveler program just during the pandemic because of the high cost of agency and certainly the concern with staffing agency in our hospitals. PM Health prides ourselves on high-quality patient care. Pat mentioned this application is for patients. We want what's needed for our patients. And we find that with agency, you get turnover, you get people that aren't familiar with your processes or clinical care and clinical expectations. We created a PM traveler pool across the country that has almost a hundred and fifty nurses that are readily available to travel to any of our hospitals. So from a staffing perspective, although we would certainly love to, you know, and we intend to create clinical rotations in the state of Connecticut, coming out of the schools for nursing, technical schools, PT, OT, speech. We also provide those clinical rotations across hospitals in all sixteen states that we operate in. And we also can provide clinical staff to Connecticut from other states because of our ability to tap into our staffing pools that we have. I think the last closing remark that I have in this statement is really just emphasizing the fact, not only do we really dedicate ourselves to high-quality patient care, innovative rehabilitation programs, equipment in the state of the art hospital that we propose to bring to this area. Although we're perceived, and we are a national company, we bring a very local flavor and consider locally each market individually. We are not a publicly traded company. We're a private company. We pride ourselves in our ability to go into each market, identify the market needs, the community needs, the physician services. And Waterbury Health has been tremendous partner to date in relation to tying in together our expertise to operate and provide inpatient rehabilitation services coupled with their local expertise, their services that they offer, the integration of the community to be able to provide this service area with a very local, community, unique level of care. And we anticipate to do that integrating throughout the community in this proposed service area.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. I would like to just ask, do you adopt your testimony as stated in Exhibit O?
Yes, I do. Thank you. All right. At this point, I will go.
Hearing Officer Novy, if I, just for, it's so minute and technical for the clarification of the record, but I think at one point in the testimony, there was a reference to a slip of the tongue of twenty-three-state area of service area. Of course, I think Ms. Smith was referring to the twenty-three municipalities in the primary service area. So I just wanted to raise that so that there's no confusion in the record.
Oh, thank you. Yes, twenty-three town.
All right. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and allow across the cross-examination by the intervenor hospital for special care. Please limit your, your questions to the nineteen A dash six thirty-nine criteria.
That, that's fine, Attorney No, Hearing Officer Novy, and we will do so with the idea of the limited cross-examination rights in OHS's order, we will also respect. So I really only have questions of Ms. Smith. I'd like to just take a moment to say we will waive any opening remarks at our turn, and we'll address some of the comments by both counsel and Ms. Smith in closing. But quickly, I just want to turn Ms. Smith to the quantitative need and utilization methodology that the applicant uses at pages forty-one and forty-two of the CON application and just verify the methodology. My first question, Ms. Smith, is very simple. Right now, Pam Health has no other facilities, be it in LTAC or in Nerf in Connecticut. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so your, your need methodology at page forty-one talks about looking at the sixty-five and overpopulation in Connecticut and looking at the assumed need for inpatient rehabilitation facility beds at national admission rates and national average length of stay for Medicare fee-for-service patients, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and when we're talking about the admissions per one thousand of Medicare fee-for-service patients in the primary counties that your twenty-three municipality service area will cover, those are New Haven County and Litchfield County, correct?
Correct.
And your own data at page thirty-eight of your application shows right now in New Haven County, the utilization of inpatient rehabilitation facilities by residents of that county is two-point-four-six per one thousand, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and same with Litchfield County, two-point-four-point-nine percent for current utilization of inpatient rehabilitation facility services, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that is significantly less than the national rate of ten-point-one-six that Pam Health and Pam Health at Waterbury has used in your, again, qualitative need and utilization methodology. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and Connecticut already has an freestanding inpatient rehabilitation facility. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, but not in New Haven or Litchfield.
But that's Mount Sinai Rehabilitation Hospital. Is that correct, Ms. Smith?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions of this witness.
Can I, can I add something?
You're going to have a redirect, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, there's no question pending, Hearing Officer.
I'll take care. Ms. Smith, you'll have a redirect with your, with your attorney after the second cross-examiner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So now we will allow cross-examination by the intervenor Gaylord.
Thank you very much, Hearing Officer Novy. I just want to touch on a couple of different points from what the other interviewer has, has addressed. Ms. Smith, I'm going to start with the staffing issues that you, you ended with a conversation about the staffing issues in the state of Connecticut. And I understand that you have reviewed the materials that we have provided without prefiled testimony on the significant nursing shortages in the state of Connecticut. Do you recall reading that, those materials?
Yes.
And it appears that from your testimony, you, well, first of all, the application indicates that Pam intends to fill roughly three hundred positions. But in your testimony, you have indicated that Pam intends to fill two-hundred-and-fifty positions. Can you clarify for us first, what number is the proper number?
The three hundred positions includes PRN staff, so that if we're including PRN and full-time, three hundred.
And are the PRNs, are those the folks that you're talking about that would be part of this traveling pool?
No. Traveling pool are full-time employees.
Out of curiosity, when a traveling nurse or traveling clinician comes to the state of Connecticut, how long do they commit to staying here?
We have different options that we've provided our employees. So we have a traveler program. They're all full-time employees, obviously, depending on the state and whether they're the licensure rules, you know, we need to make sure we adhere to that. And the employee can stay as long as they want. We've also offered twelve-week contracts for some of our employees as well that want to sign up for a twelve-week contract. They're still full-time employees. And then they can go to another site if necessary or have flexibility.
Now, so of the three hundred positions that you expect to have filled at this particular site, how many of the travelers are committed to coming to Connecticut on a full-time basis?
That would be determined at time of opening. We, we will post positions and will certainly tap into local opportunities. But the, the travelers program, that would, that would not even begin until we opened the hospital. So we have not committed any travelers at this point in time, but our pool of the travelers continues to grow.
Okay, and do you know how many of your travelers are properly licensed to practice in Connecticut?
At this point in time, no.
Now, you indicated that you plan on looking at the local pool. Obviously, when you, when you open the facility, the goal would be to start with the local pool. Doesn't that get us back to the issue, though, if the local pool is short on resources already? Where are those resources going to come from for the local?
It certainly does, and we face the same thing in all of our markets because of the nursing shortage. So certainly coming into a new market, we offer positions and will create clinical rotations through all of the schools in Connecticut and open up the positions. But again, from a staffing or shortage concern, we've been able to adequately staff all sixty-five hospitals across the country with a significant reduction in agency, almost zero agency in our hospitals to date.
And you indicated that you intend to implement a CNA program or other, other ventures together with other hospitals so that you can allow nurses to do rotations, nursing students to do rotations through facilities. Are you aware that Gaylord already has a CNA program in place and that they already have clinical relationships and internships with the, with the universities and the, the schools in the state of Connecticut?
Well, I would think so. I mean, I think that's not uncommon for hospitals and every level of care to offer clinical rotations, residencies for physicians, therapy, nursing rotations. So that does not surprise me.
So you'll be pulling from the same pool of, of resources, though, is my point, is that you're going to be pulling from the same group of resources?
May I, may I object?
You can object.
My objection is, these questions, I mean, I, I have no problem with the questions about what is happening now, what is planned, but we're, as some of the earlier questions that I let go by that, that Ms. Smith answered appropriately, a lot of this is speculating about what may happen if approved a year or more.
a lot of this is speculating about what may happen if approved a year or more from now. So this idea of trying to have Ms. Smith answer questions about circumstances a year or more from now, I think is inappropriate. We can finish with factual information today.
I am going to sustain the objection. Ms. Smith, you do not have to answer that question. I feel that you have already, Ms. Attorney Letty, Letty has already made her point and is going back around to the same point that she made in her previous question.
So let's move on. Pam in general, and your testimony in particular, has spent a significant amount of time pointing out that there are clear bright-line distinctions between those patients that would be properly admitted into an LTAC versus those who would go to an IRF. Is that right?
Correct.
And is it your understanding that, or is it your testimony today, that there is no overlap between patients that can be accepted into an LTAC and patients that would also be acceptable for admission in an IRF?
If each provider is applying the criteria set forth for each level of care, there should be no overlap.
So in that, you talked about that 60% group of patients that have to have a certain type of diagnosis. Are you saying, for instance, that, if you're talking about spinal injury patients, are those patients also treatable at an LTAC?
Yeah, so yes, absolutely. So let me just, and you raise a great point that I think we should probably expand upon. Diagnosis alone does not determine level of care, right? A stroke, a spinal cord injury. So if you're going to say, you know, when you ask about patients and overlap, a stroke patient that gets treated within the window for TPA could recover and go home. It's a still-stroke patient. That stroke patient doesn't need any inpatient care. So from a diagnostic standpoint, if you're only going to look at diagnoses or severity of injury, because I think I saw something in that submission about severity of injury, severity of illness that is derived from diagnoses, absolutely there's overlap, because a stroke isn't a stroke, isn't the same across each patient. So from a diagnostic standpoint, yes, all levels of care treat, acute care hospitals treat strokes, LTACs, or spinal cord injury, to your example. So from a diagnostic standpoint alone, absolutely there's overlap, because every patient isn't going to present the same. So that's where I mentioned the criteria. That spinal cord injury patient must be able to participate in two out of three therapies five days a week, three hours, three hours a day, intense therapy. That you cannot, you can't derive that from diagnoses alone.
Okay, and in terms of the length of stay, you indicated that there is a distinction in the rules that with an LTAC it has to be one, and with the, with an IRF it has to be a lesser amount of days. But at the point of entry, if it's unclear, for instance, whether the recovery will take 10 days or 30 days, isn't there also an overlap there, a possibility between the patients that are admitted to an LTAC and the patients that are admitted to an IRF? Or are you standing by the fact that there are two bright-line distinctions between the two types of patients?
In my opinion, there are two, two lines that are very distinct and different, because an LTAC does have to meet a 25-day length of stay. Rehab does not have a length of stay requirement. A rehab patient has to meet all of those other coverage criteria. So you're applying two different criteria. And I will add, as far as the length of stay goes, Medicare does require, on the pre-admission screening assessment for rehab, the ability to tolerate therapy, the ability to make significant practical improvement with a goal-to-go home, and that rehab physician has to demonstrate and determine that anticipated length of stay prior to admission, and then again on the four-day plan of care. So it is, it is established and determined prior to admission for inpatient rehabilitation.
If you could look at page seven of your prefiled testimony, there's a chart where you set out the differences of what's required by Medicare between an IRF, the SNF, and the LTAC. Do you see that?
Well, I know it off the top of my head, but I, yes, I'm getting to it, but.
Yeah, the only reason I ask.
Speaking to, yes.
If you could look at the chart, I want to ask specific questions about the chart.
I'm on the chart, yes.
Okay, and Hearing Officer Novi, if you're, just want to give you enough time to get on that page as well.
I'm already on it.
Great. On that page, for the first one, for instance, you indicate that one thing that's required of Medicare is that for an IRF is that there's close medical supervision by physicians specifically trained in rehabilitation. Is that right?
That's correct.
And you indicate that it is not required that an LTAC have that service?
That's correct.
Do you know whether Gaylord has that service?
From reading Gaylord's website, yes, they do have physical medicine and rehabilitation physicians.
So they do have that option available?
They do have physicians, yes.
Okay, and then the same question for the 24-hour rehabilitation nursing. You indicate an IRF is required to have that service through Medicare, but the LTAC is not required to have that service. Do you see that?
I do.
And my question again is, do you know whether Gaylord provides that service or has the ability to provide that service?
No, I don't know that. I don't know that. And I'll just remind you, this is, these are what, this is what's required by Medicare.
Right, I understand. And my point is, is that if we're talking about duplication of services, if Gaylord already has a service available, then would you agree that there could be an overlap in services?
No, I really don't. With a 20-day, 28-day length of stay and a 51% discharge to community, that's not the same type of services that we are proposing here for this hospital. It's not.
Okay, but the specific services here, you're saying that an LTAC does not need to have the 24-hour rehabilitative rehabilitation nursing, but Gaylord does provide that option, correct?
I don't know. I said.
And then the last one is the three hours of intense therapy per day. You made a point of saying that that's a very unique requirement under Medicare for, for an IRF, correct?
That's correct.
And are you aware of whether Gaylord has that option for its patients to have three hours of therapy a day if it's in the patient's best interest?
I am not aware of those services.
Okay, and if Gaylord was able to provide those services, would you consider that to be a duplication of the services, the same services that an IRF would be providing?
No.
Not limited. So if an IRF can provide three hours, or the patients can receive three hours of therapy for five days, and Gaylord can do the same thing, that's not a duplication?
Objection to the form of the question?
I'm going to sustain the objection. It seems like you've already asked and answered that, but I'll give you a chance to rephrase.
You indicate, if you can know my objection also, I just want to be sure that I understand. I under, in the big picture, you're saying that they are distinct services and that the two are different. What I'm asking you is that if an LTAC offers the service that is required of an IRF under Medicare, isn't there a potential for overlap of the two services between the two facilities?
May I state the basis, with all due respect, Hearing Officer Novi, of my objection?
Yes.
On the objection.
May I speak, Attorney? My basis for the objection is, the overlap in service, as whatever the overlap in service, what you are trying to combatively or argumentatively try to get this witness to admit is to cave on the distinction between an IRF and what Gaylord does. If Gaylord overlaps with this service, in this particular instance, that does not make it an IRF. If that's what you're trying to ask her, then ask her that.
Okay, I'm going to rule that the, that the best person to testify about services offered by Gaylord is Gaylord. So I'm going to limit the applicant's knowledge of what Gaylord offers, because they don't work there. You, I'm going to, I think that this line of questioning is starting to go too far afield. So I, Attorney Letty, I would save these questions for Gaylord and their witnesses, because Gaylord is the best person to testify as to what services Gaylord does offer and not a competitor who is coming in from out of state. So I'm going to sustain the objection, and you can hold off on questions about specific services offered by your client in your testimony. You did ask if she was aware. She answered no. We're going to leave it at that, or she wasn't aware.
And if I just, if I could just respond very quickly, I agree with you that I don't expect the witness to have deep knowledge of what Gaylord does, and my witness would certainly be testifying about that. And I was by no means intended to be combative, as Attorney Mahan indicated. I'm trying to understand, because the witness has specifically indicated that those services are not available through the existing facilities in the state of Connecticut. To make that kind of an absolute statement, there must be some general knowledge of what services are available at the facilities in Connecticut. So my point is merely that when you're going to talk in absolutes, I just want to understand where that, what's behind those statements, and so I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay, and I will just state that you did ask, I'm paying very close attention, and you did ask, are you aware if these services are offered at Gaylord? And that is a question that when she said, I don't know, that is the answer, and it is that you can get a much better answer out of your own client.
Absolutely.
Who does work for Gaylord. So let's move on from, you know, hypotheticals about your own, your own client with firsthand knowledge. All right. Any additional question?
Attorney Novi, Hearing Officer Novi, excuse me. I fully realize that that was, you know, not my cross-examination on behalf of Hospital for Special Care and the limitations of the OHS order on the intervenors objecting to evidence that comes in in this proceeding. However, I would just respectfully ask the Hearing Officer to caution applicants, counsel, against speaking objections, of which there were numerous in that back and forth. State the basis for the objection, and then have the Hearing Officer rule on the objection. In my view, respectfully, would be a much more appropriate way to conduct this hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just would like to remind everybody that we are trying to, it may give pause, let people state their objections. We should address all objections to me as the Hearing Officer, not to each other. Remember, you are speaking to me in the objection and not the opposite counsel, so.
I have no further questions.
Okay. So at this time, we'll go on to cross-examination by intervenor Gaylord. Just, actually, we are interviewing Gaylord. Sorry about that. I do apologize. We are going to redirect by the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, I believe toward the end of the cross-examination of Hospital for Special Care Counsel, there was something that you were in, at least, perhaps in the process or near the end of speaking, and then it occurred to you to add something to your answer. And the Hearing Officer appropriately said that you had an opportunity to address any additional information that you felt you omitted by my redirect. What information were you trying to add on to your answer when you were finishing your testimony on that cross-examination?
Yes, that was in relation to the utilization, the per 1,000 beds, and how low the utilization rate is in the two counties compared to national averages. I just wanted to point out the fact that the reason for such low utilization rate is because those services don't exist. So we have experienced this in other CON states, Delaware being a perfect example, in which we were first to enter Delaware with our first hospital in Dover, Delaware, that demonstrated significantly low utilization rates. It doesn't mean that service isn't needed, or patients don't need that service. It simply is a reflection of lack of service availability to those patients. Once we were approved to open that hospital in Dover, Delaware, we had a waiting list. We have operated at 98% occupancy since we've opened. We have since put forth another CON application in Georgetown, Delaware, that was approved, and have recently also joint venture partner with a large health system, Bay Health, in Delaware that had an existing rehab unit that is now partner with Dover, with Georgetown, and we're building a new freestanding rehabilitation hospital on their campus where they had a rehabilitation unit. My point being, a low utilization rate does not equate to a lack of need of services. It's really a reflection of lack of availability of services to utilize, which is what's happening in these two counties.
Thank you. I have no other redirect questions of this witness.
Okay. All right. So at this point, we will move on to your next witness. Will the applicant please call their second witness?
Yes, at this point, I would like to call Dr. Adam Burick as a witness.
Good morning.
Right. Will you please get your name for the record again, sir?
Sure. My name is Dr. Adam Burick, B-U-R-I-C-K.
Thank you. All right. So what, do you adopt your written testimony as submitted prior to the hearing and noted as Exhibit Q?
I do.
Right. Okay, Attorney Monahan, go ahead.
Dr. Burick, of course, you have submitted and now adopted your prefiled testimony. And, and as was mentioned with witness Kristen Smith, there's certainly no expectation for you to reiterate that here. However, having reviewed points in the petitions that were filed and the testimony that went, the prefiled testimony that went along with them, are there any points in your testimony that you, on which you wish to amplify for the purposes of this testimony at this moment?
It's my opening remarks.
Please do so.
Okay, thank you very much, and good morning, everyone, Hearing Officer Novi and OHS panel. My name is Dr. Adam Burick, and I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Medical Officer for Pam Health. I've had the privilege of being a physician now for 29 years, and over that time, practicing medicine has changed an awful lot. But what has not changed is realizing that the right patient with the right doctor, in the right care setting, at the right time, is truly the key to great patient outcomes. In Connecticut, the single Connecticut chronic disease hospital license covers two very quite distinct types of healthcare providers: long-term acute care hospitals, which I'll refer to as LTACs, and inpatient rehab hospitals, which CMS refers to as IRFs. Pam Health owns and operates both. We have a plethora of both rehab hospitals and LTAC hospitals in the United States. And what we found is this, we found that the relationship between our rehabs and our LTACs are synergistic, synergistic but distinctly different regarding the types of patients we take care of, how they operate, and then how they're staffed. You know, Mrs. Smith testified about the regulatory differences between the LTACs and the IRFs, but I want to reduce those rules to practicality. When we look at the patients that are taken care of in our LTACs, those patients are extremely sick. They require two specialized physicians at a minimum. They usually include complex wound care. Some of them are ICU level of care. Some of them are near ICU level of care. They may or may not be able to participate in any therapy whatsoever. But they do require, as Mrs. Smith may testify, they do require, by Medicare's rules and regulations, to have a medically appropriate length of stay averaging about 25 days. Definitely a CMS requirement. And I'll give you an example. An example of a patient like this is someone with severe respiratory failure. They're on a mechanical ventilator. They might be bed-bound. They might have a feeding tube in. That's your typical. That's your typical great LTAC patient. They clearly would not qualify for IRF services in their current condition. Now let's switch gears to our rehab hospitals. The the criteria we look at for our rehab hospitals are a patient that can really attain a functional improvement. In an average length of stay of about thirteen days in our company. With a rehab physician leading the charge, who is specially trained in rehab medicine. We have nurses that are trained in rehabilitation medicine, and that patient would receive an average of three hours a day of therapy, five days a week. So in the example I just gave you of someone with respiratory failure, if they were liberated from the ventilator. And they could now tolerate three hours of intensive therapy, five days a week, they might be a great candidate for IRF services. Another example that Mrs. Smith alluded to in terms of diagnoses. What if we had a patient with a stroke? Every patient is unique, we can't, we can't classify people simply by diagnoses. So if we have a patient with a stroke that involves their brain stem and they're in a coma and they're in respiratory failure. These patients clearly clearly are not going to meet rehab criteria to be admitted to an IRF. That's an LTAC patient. But if you have that same patient with a stroke, and they simply are having difficulty moving the right side, but they're otherwise fine. That patient's not going to meet LTAC criteria, but they're the perfect patient for an inpatient rehabilitation facility. Both patients I just described have the exact same diagnosis, stroke, but they're very, very different. So diagnoses alone are not determinants of level of care. In Waterbury today, the first stroke patient I described is in the right level of care in an LTAC. The second has much less availability for that right level of care. So this is what I mean by synergy. Both levels of care are necessary for optimal patient outcomes. The right patient at the right level of care at the right time. Um, Gaylord Specialty Healthcare's website lists all of the levels of care. Specifically noting that Gaylord is an LTAC. And I want to note that every other level of care on their website is listed, from the short-term acute care hospital to a patient being in their home. The difference is the intensity of therapy. The specially trained physician rehab PM and R oversight, specialized nursing care, the team conferences. All of those things help differentiate the IRF from the other levels of care. Right now, the greater Waterbury area has levels of care. And all of the levels of care on Gaylord's website except an IRF. And if successful, Pam Health will bring that synergistic level of IRF care to your community. I welcome your questions and appreciate the opportunity to explore this critical issue before you. Thank you very much.
May I add just one question of of uh before you moved to cross examination, um, hearing officer Novy?
Yes, go ahead, attorney Monahan.
Um. Doctor, i- i- in the description of 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 when you were differentiating the diagnoses. Or or the same diagnoses does not necessarily mean um, you know, being appropriate in two different facilities. You've mentioned that sort of the 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 person who maybe suffered a stroke, but was difficult, having difficulty on one side. Might be the perfect patient for an IRF. When you say the perfect patient for an IRF, can you bring that down even more from from him? Perhaps in my point of view, of a layperson's point of view. Why is it the perfect patient for the IRF? What what is it that's different about the IRF with that patient? That results in something that you consider more optimal for that patient?
Sure, I'm happy to. First of all, um, the first pa- the the stroke patient that I described that has some weakness on the right side. Um, that particular patient, as I mentioned, is perfect for rehab for this reason. The American Academy of PM and R, there's a significant amount of data present that shows that early intervention in inpatient rehabilitation facilities. Provides a better outcome for patients that are stroke patients than those that do not enter inpatient rehabilitation facilities. So early intervention is the key, like it is for most things in medicine, to get the optimal patient outcome. So if that patient can tolerate the fifteen hours a week of therapy, if they're able to do that. We know that those patients have better outcomes than those that do not.
Thank you for clarifying that for for my benefit, I hope it assisted the panel. I have no other, no other questions.
All right, we will move to cross examination by the intervenor, Hospital for Special Care.
Hearing Officer Novy, since uh Dr. Burick has made clear that he's deferring to others. On the need question, Hospital for Special Care has no cross examination of this witness. But I would note again, a procedural objection to what just transpired, which sure sounded like redirect. From their attorney on their, you know, case in chief, so. Just I'd like.
I I I understand attorney Cowherd, um, however, the witness did state he only had an opening statement. So I interpreted that to be his opening statement where he was just going to speak and then he would ask him a question.
Okay, notice.
I would prefer, we don't have opening statements and we just have evidence, but that is what he he stated he wanted to give, so I made that allowance. Um. All right, so at this point, we will move to cross examination by intervenor Gaylord.
And thank you, hearing examiner Novy, we do not disagree with anything that the witness has said, uh, so we do not have any cross examination.
All right, thank you very much, um, we will now go to redirect by the applicant, do you have any redirect, attorney Monahan?
I have no redirect of this witness.
Okay, all right, so at this time, we will move to your third witness.
Certainly. Um, for our third witness, um, the applicant applicant calls Dr. Justin Lundby. Who can introduce himself to you and and accept his testimony as sworn testimony.
Okay, Mr. Lundby, if you could turn on your camera, are you in the room or?
Right here.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Attorney, Hearing Officer Novy and the Office of Health Strategy Review Panel. Uh, thank you for your attention to my testimony, my name is.
Yep, I was gonna say first, uh, if you want to start with your name and if you adopt your testimony before you start your speech.
My name is Justin Lundby, L U N D B Y E, and I adopt my testimony.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, thank you for your brief uh attention to my oral testimony. Um, as I mentioned, my name is Justin Lundby, I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer for Waterbury Health, which I've been in for now for one year. Um, I uh prior to that was the Chief Medical Officer here at Waterbury Hospital. And had have a lot of interactions with patients during that time, both under my care and under the care of my residency program residents. What I want to do is highlight one of the um the points that were made by one of the uh. Opposers, if you if I might, uh, and that includes a poor profit profile, and I just want to shed some light on what Waterbury Health offers. Not only to our patients, but to our community. Uh, first of all, uh, Waterbury Health employs over twenty-one hundred people. Uh, which live in the community and around the community. Uh, since two thousand and sixteen, we have invested fifty-seven million dollars into this organization. And seven million dollars of charitable care to our community. Um, and uh, so I just wanted to sort of make that differentiation. And that includes a twenty-nine million dollar tax relief, we pay property taxes every year to uh to obviously the the state. So um, our services that we offer at this organization. Uh, that has been alluded to in different clinical scenarios includes a level-two stroke center. Uh, many of these patients require that distinctive care that we have all been talking about with IRFs. Um, I've had patients under my care that have needed those types of services. Additionally, we are a level-two trauma center, and there's not a day that goes by where we don't admit a patient with a traumatic injury to this organization. Um, and requires extensive rehabilitation, not at an LTAC level. And not at a SNF level, but clearly at a uh IRF level. Lastly, we have also recently expanded our neurosurgical services to now include oncologic cranial surgery. Which often will require uh quite extensive post-acute inpatient rehabilitation services. Something that we can't offer as in a short-term acute care hospital, we just don't have the resources for a long period of time. So without having access to this, all of the patients that I've services that I've alluded to, that coming from these services, the patients. Um, suffer. Uh, like was mentioned briefly uh from the previous testimony. Uh, the delay in care and the delay in rehabilitation that we can see with these patients. Obviously, delay and uh impede the progress to full recovery, which is detrimental to our patients in the community. Um, the second point I want to make is that Waterbury Hospital specifically covers. A very significant in-need patient population, seventy-five percent of our patients are Medicare or Medicaid based. Uh, we have a significant uh. Patient population with different uh, you know, underserved uh uh resources. Uh, without an appropriate rehabilitation service for these patients, they're often left without access. And what do I mean by that? Um, I work very closely with our case managers, I I bring patients to them that I need to refer to rehabilitation services. And uh, the message that is often delivered to me is that there are no beds available. Um, the uh Hospital for Special Care, Gaylord, only has a few Medicaid patient beds available at this time. And we cannot bring those patients over for those services. Uh, which I find detrimental for our patients that need that level of care and often are resulted in being transferred out of state. Or brought to a skilled nursing facility where they certainly cannot get that level of care that they can get. In a inpatient rehabilitation facility. So it leaves us with that challenge of getting those patients, obviously, to those uh facilities. So. The last point that I want to make is uh. Patients that come to our organization have all the levels of service that are required. We provide the acute care, we I talked about the stroke, the trauma, uh, all of the resources. In addition to this, Waterbury Health offers a very comprehensive constellation of services on the outpatient basis. We have a very good partnership with our skilled nursing facilities in the community. We have a DNA service that can provide services. We also have access rehab, uh, which uh uh provides outpatient rehabilitation services. The missing piece here that we've all tried to distinguish from LTACs and other things is exactly an IRF. Uh, which is currently uh a void in our community and frankly to our patients. Uh, and I will say it's not fair for our patients that might not have the same resources and access, not to have access to those levels of care. And I might argue that if we used the LTAC beds appropriately and the facilities of special uh Hospital for Special Care. And Gaylord, it might actually open up more beds to LTAC type of ser- services rather than. Uh, uh, the other sort of cross uh level of services that we've talked about. Um. I'm gonna close by saying the following, uh, number one, there is a window of care that we want to try to get to our patients quickly and get them the services they need. Uh, we have a significant facility here with significant uh services and fantastic physicians that want to do the right thing for their patients. Uh, we are seeking an IRF to provide that one necessary piece of resource to our patients in this community in the twenty-three. Uh, towns that were mentioned. This is clearly a distinction from a skilled nursing facility and an LTAC. It falls in between those two on the spectrum, and it's a very specific level of service. Again, that is something that I want to offer to my patients as a physician, um, and uh as someone that works in this community. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to, uh, you you will have. Um, and a chance to ask questions at the redirect. Um, attorney Monahan.
That's fine, thank you very much.
All right, so we will move to cross examination by intervenor Hospital for Special Care. Just a reminder, we're limiting this to nineteen-eight dash six thirty-nine criteria.
Sure, thank you, hearing officer Novy, I I just have a couple of questions for uh uh Dr. Lundby. Doctor, as President Chief Executive Officer of Waterbury Health, you're aware that on October sixth. Prospect Medical Holdings and Yale New Haven Health announced. Uh, the execution of definitive agreements for Yale New Haven Health to acquire two Connecticut health systems from Prospect, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and one of those health systems is Waterbury Health, inclusive of Waterbury Hospital, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Yale New Haven Health is not a party to this proceeding or this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Yale New Haven Health includes Yale New Haven Hospital and Lawrence and Memorial Hospital. And you're aware that in those hospitals, Yale New Haven Health has a twenty-four-bed inpatient rehabilitation unit. And Lawrence and Memorial Hospital has a sixteen-bed inpatient rehabilitation unit, is that correct?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, well, I I direct you to page seventy-five of your own application, uh, Dr. Lundby on that. And if you if you can turn to that uh page, please.
Okay.
Okay, so your own data search shows the current utilization of the Lawrence and Memorial. Uh, inpatient rehabilitation unit sixty-nine point eight percent, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and down the page, Yale New Haven Hospital, that its current utilization is seventy-seven percent, correct?
That's what it says, yes.
Okay, and that's both below eighty percent utilization, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the question was, I apologize.
Those are both below eighty percent current utilization according to your own data at page seventy-five, is that correct?
Those two, yes.
Okay. And. There's no letter of support from Yale New Haven Health in your exhibit F to your application, is that correct? To this, okay, thank you, no further questions.
Okay. All right, we'll move to cross examination by.
Hearing Officer Novy, I have one more question, I I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask Dr. Lundby. To to verify uh the chart at page five of his uh. Testimony.
Yeah, I can verify that.
Okay, and Dr. Lundby, that says it from a period of August one, twenty-twenty-one through July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Waterbury Hospital made a total of two referrals to the inpatient rehabilitation facility that does exist in Connecticut. Which is. Mount Sinai, correct?
Correct.
And one of those, and one of those was in fact accepted.
Yes.
Thank you, no further questions now.
Okay, at this point, we will move to the cross examination by intervenor Gaylord, please uh remember that you are limited to nineteen-eight dash six thirty-nine criteria.
Thank you very much, Hearing Officer Novy, I just have a few follow-up questions as well, um. The, Dr. Lundby, in your testimony, you provided a very compelling story of a gentleman that was moved. To the New Jersey facility because there were no resources available in the state of Connecticut to treat him. Do you recall that that part of your testimony? Do you recall that that part of your testimony?
I do.
And based on your recollection of that particular patient, do you know whether he would have qualified for an IRF placement in the state of Connecticut?
Yes, I believe he would have. I can't remember all the details, but I believe he would have, yes.
And ultimately, he was transferred to a facility in New Jersey that that is identified as an LTAC. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you mentioned that Waterbury does have a particularly high percentage of patients that are Medicare or Medicaid dependent. Do you recall that? And I have a couple of follow-up questions about the percentages of Medicaid patients that Pam anticipates, recognizing that, of course, it's not an open operating facility. But I would like, I think it's relevant to the the factors as to the percentages that Pam anticipates it will serve for the Medicaid population going forward. And if I can draw your attention to the application, it's showing up on my page seventy-three. It is the OHS Table Six in the application.
Yep, got it.
And if I'm reading this correctly, there is a line for Medicaid. The second line, it has the projected numbers for each of the three succeeding years coming forward. And the first, which I assume is a ramp-up period, Pam anticipates serving one point six percent of its pot of its patients will be Medicaid patients. Is that correct?
I mean, that's what it says, yes.
Okay, and then if you proceed to the following two years, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six, the projection is that eight percent of Pam's patients will be Medicaid recipients. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Okay. And is that typical of the percentage of Medicaid patients that is treated overall by West by Waterbury Hospital? You indicated a seventy-five percent number. Is that of Medicaid patients or is that a mix of Medicaid and Medicare?
Can you clarify the question? I'm not sure if I follow.
Sure. You mentioned at the beginning of your testimony today that approximately seventy-five percent of Waterbury Hospital's patients, and I and I just, I don't know whether I heard it correctly or not. You you said that they were, I believe, a mixture of Medicare and Medicaid patients. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct.
And do you know approximately what the overall percentage of Medicaid patients, the percentages that Waterbury Hospital treats?
Yeah, I think it's around fifty percent or so from from that.
Okay, so fifty percent of the patients overall, not not those who would necessarily be referred, would be Medicaid recipients.
Say that again.
So fifty percent is, I just want to clarify from my own understanding, approximately fifty percent of Waterbury Hospital's patients are Medicaid recipients.
Right. I I'm sort of guessing this number. I can't recall exactly what it is, but I think that's a ballpark.
Okay. And we've talked a lot about whether or not there would be a duplication of services between the proposed I R F facility and the LTACs that are in existence already in the state of Connecticut. Do you recall talking about the distinction between the two types of services?
Yes.
And and my question is relatively simple, I think. Why are we considering the acceptance rate or the admission rate for referrals from Waterbury Hospital to an LTAC if these services are completely unrelated, if they are completely distinct? And I draw your attention, and I apologize, I just want to just jump back to the table that that Attorney Coward referenced earlier, where it talks about the number of patients that were referred to the LTACs. That's the the chart that's on your page five.
My testimony five, is that what you're alluding to?
Correct.
Yeah. What was the question again?
My question was if the services provided by an LTAC are completely distinct from the types of services that an I R F would be providing, why are we even considering the referral data and the denial data that's on the chart that you have on page five?
I think it's important because it shows a very high utilization or low acceptance rate for LTAC patients. So if your facilities were to provide the LTAC services to the LTAC patient, the IRF patients would have or my patients would have more access to your LTAC facilities when it's an LTAC patient. So I guess what I'm saying is that your your capacity is already high. We can't get LTAC patients in there. And if there was IRF facility in Waterbury, there would probably open up more LTACs for your facility. Makes sense?
I think so. And so I'm trying to understand then that this this data is being used to justify the need for additional beds at the I R F level. And so I'm trying to understand, i- is your testimony now that your goal by having a separate facility, LTAC beds would free up at the LTAC facilities in the state, therefore, there would be more beds available for I R F patients? Is that what I understand your testimony to be?
Well, I, you know, the table is there to share the access for our patients. You know, it's all we have. Like, like we've talked about throughout this, there's no clear IRF facility that we have access to and that we can refer to. And so, you know, it's the existing data for Gaylord and for Hospital for Special Care.
Do you know if the or whether sale of the Waterbury Hospital facility to Yale New Haven goes through, will there be an agreement with Yale New Haven that I R F referrals will have to go to a Yale affiliated facility?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
Hearing Officer Novy, I'd like to lodge an objection on the ground that that is something that is not that is not exist in existence today. It's an announced transaction. It still has to go before your very agency. And there is, it is not relevant to today's facts and circumstances, what may be possible speculative and could change under numerous circumstances. So I object to projecting what a a a transaction may look like that is presented, which hasn't been ruled on by O H S.
If I may, just for a moment, if I may be heard, just for a moment. And that's that's why I asked if he knew. I didn't.
Well, no, Attorney Letty, I'm going to limit that testimony because there has been no, there's been, there will need to be a C O N in that. A C O N has not been filed, and it has not been properly before the agency yet. So we will limit testimony on a on on that.
I have no further questions.
All right. Okay, thank you, Dr. Letty. We will now go to a redirect by the applicant.
Thank you. I just have one or two redirect questions. Dr. Lundby, when you talked about very generally your personal experience in in observing delays in care for patients that you are trying to discharge to appropriate facilities for appropriate rehabilitation care, what kind of delays for the layperson who's not in the hospital day to day are we are you referring to? Are you talking about hours, days, weeks? Can you can you shed a little light on that, please?
Yeah, both days and weeks, unfortunately, and it's really not what I would love to see or like to see with our patients that really need these services immediately. I think it was mentioned earlier by one of the witnesses that clearly early intervention is prescribed to a much better outcome than a delayed intervention such, you know, when we speak about rehabilitation therapy.
And and if I, one last follow-up, and without reiterating what you has referenced as prefer earlier testimony by another witness, from your clinical perspective, why is the sooner the better in that particular instance?
Because patients can return to a normal lifestyle and a normal living after receiving the therapy. And if we don't deliver that therapy immediately and quickly, that chance of full recovery diminishes.
Thank you. I have no further questions on redirect.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lundby. We will now move to your fourth and final witness.
Hearing Officer Novy, if I may be so bold, if may I ask for a five-minute break for?
Yeah, so why don't we take a break at this time? We will take a a ten-minute break to allow everybody to go and to get things done that they need to, and then we will be back here at eleven-twenty. We'll give you eleven-twenty-three, so you have a little more than ten minutes. Okay, please make sure that your cameras are turned off and muted so that you are not recorded during this time, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good. Good morning. It is eleven-twenty-three a.m. We are going to reconvene this hearing. We would like to remind everybody that you did just hear the Zoom, or hopefully you just heard the Zoom meeting say that it is recording in progress and that your remaining in this hearing is consenting to being recorded. We are still on the fourth applicant for the, or sorry, the fourth witness for the applicant. So we will begin with that applicant right now. If you could begin by stating your name, title, and stating whether you adopt your pre-filled testimony.
My name is Lester Shindell. I was the former president and CEO at Waterbury Health until November twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, and I currently serve as a special advisor for post-acute services for Waterbury Health. And I do adopt my testimony except for one correction. On page nine of my testimony, I said until recently, all C D Hs in Connecticut maintain Medicare certification as LTACs. Recent CMS changes permit LTACs to obtain CMS certification to locate an I R F unit inside the LTAC. However, in Connecticut, only Mount Sinai elected this option. I want to correct that. CMS data clearly shows that Mount Sinai has been an IRF since nineteen ninety-five. So I'm adopting my testimony with that change.
You said that was since nineteen ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. May begin.
Okay, may I just ask an initial question to get the questioning going to for Mr. Shindell? Okay. Mr. Shindell, you, of course, have now adopted your pre-filed testimony with that correction as noted. And you've, I take it you've had an opportunity to review the petitions and the materials that went with them. Have has that review caused you to want to either expand or amplify on any particular points with respect to the application that you've been such an integral part of?
Yes.
Would you please explain those to the hearing?
I will amplify certain points in the application. I just want to give you some background of my career. So my career includes more than forty-three years as a senior healthcare executive in both acute and post-acute services. I was for almost twenty years, I was the CEO. I was also the, but in within that twenty years, I was the former CEO at New England Sinai Hospital, which was a two-hundred-and-nine-bed hospital in Stoughton, Massachusetts. And that is an LTAC and and also one of the founding members of the National Association of Long-Term Care Hospitals. And I was also the executive vice president of the Visiting Nurse Services of New York, largest home care agency in the country. And I was a senior vice president of strategy at Northeast Rehabilitation Hospital Network in Salem, New Hampshire. So I bring a unique qualifications to comment on this application, being both an acute care CEO specifically at Waterbury Health and other hospitals in Massachusetts, as well as having experiences as an LTAC CEO and administrator and a working in a four-hospital rehabilitation network in New Hampshire. So with that knowledge of both acute and post-acute care, that's the basis of some of my comments. In today's testimony, I'd like to discuss, among other things, four critical issues. The application, if approved, will satisfy satisfy an unmet need for freestanding intensive acute inpatient rehabilitation facility services for the greater Waterbury area and residents. As we've identified, it's those residents in that twenty-three-town area, mostly located in Litchfield and New Haven counties. Inpatient, the second point is I R Hs or I R Fs, as they're known by Medicare, primarily, as you've heard, serve patients who have suffered stroke, spinal cord injury, amputation, major multiple traumas, fractures of the femur and hip, brain injury, neurological disorders, movement disorders, and or severe debility from cardiac sepsis, pulmonary and prolonged hospitalization. As you've heard, there is a distinction that Kristen very eloquently described in her presentation between an LTAC and an I R F. In my experience, working in both settings, there is a clear distinction between those two. The third point I'm going to, I'd like to make is proposed IRF, if approved, would serve these twenty-three towns as a P S A identified in the application. It'd be the first of the kind in many ways because I will discuss the socioeconomic challenges currently faced by residents of Waterbury and its surrounding areas in assessing long post-acute care services, all of which would be the establishment of an I R F would help to alleviate some of those issues. The fourth point I'd like to discuss is the applicant's consistency with the policies of Waterbury Health, which will which services Medicaid beneficiaries. I know there was a lot of questioning just before on the Medicaid population at Waterbury Health. We believe that that this does not result in an unnecessary duplication of services. This would enhance the diversity of healthcare providers and patient choice and improve quality accessibility and cost effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the identified region. Yes, Waterbury has about a seventy-five percent Medicare and Medicaid combined population it serves. The largest cohort of that Medicaid population is in our OB unit because many, many of our OB patients are Medicaid. For this population or adult population, the Medicaid population is not as high as our Medicare population. And our adult populations, our Medicare population is between sixty and sixty-five percent, and our Medicaid population is less than that. When you look at our Medicaid population as a whole, it's much larger when you take into account our women giving birth and their and their babies. So let me talk about need. Now, now, the needs analysis was done by Pam and 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 Health, and Kristen Smith did a good job of reviewing that. But I what I really like to do, though, is focus on what what the needs analysis was based on. And it was based on using a number of approaches, actually four different approaches. The first was a D R G history of hospitals in the service area. The second was community need, if the IRF use rates applied to service area populations. The third was Waterbury's health discharge disposition experience and also just discussion with providers in the area. The D R G approach, and I want to not go into the specifics and the details because that was done by by Pam Health and presented to me at the time when I was CEO at this hospital and and understood the analysis. Because when I was when I was senior vice president of a strategy for an IRF network, I used a similar analysis to determine need and in my in my work. So what the D R G approach did was it filtered acute inpatient discharge data from the Chime, Connecticut Chime database for specific D R Gs that associate with IRF admissions. The filter D R Gs involved stroke, head injury, cardiac neurology, and orthopedics. This produced an estimated need for fifty IRF beds in twenty-twenty-one, which is forty, which is which is more than the forty-two requested in the twenty-twenty-six attachment. The reason I'm commenting on that is that this is a valid approach to look at. The reason I'm commenting on that is that this is a valid approach to look at population health data. It is traditionally used by inpatient rehabilitation hospitals to assess the needs of patients. It's just another method of looking, but a very specific method to look at a local community. The second approach that we use, similar to the DRG approach, is a community needs approach, which applies to 2019 national average for Medicare beat the service admissions per thousand to the 23 towns that we, we talked about and specifically over 65 years of old age. And I know that's been questioned about the population and the mix between traditional Medicare and Medicare advantage. Despite that mix, it assumes that Medicare will represent 70% of the admissions of, of, of the rehab hospital. And then it deducts whatever the amount of availability of care and accessibility of beds in the service area. The service area has no IRF beds. This approach produced a need for 48 beds and that, and I showed that in my application on table 11. The Pam application repeats that same CMS use rate analysis, using a lower Medicare occupancy at Danbury and Hartford hospitals and adding an allowance for the number of beds occupied by residences in the towns. So as Christian pointed out, it, it low utilization of IRFs in this market, greater Waterbury market is because there aren't any immediately accessible. And also, it also highlights the difficult population that, that we serve. Because when our discharge planners here at Waterbury Health attempt to make referrals, they are trying to get very difficult patients with a very difficult payer mix into local area hospitals. And as you can see, that's been pointed out by a number of, of, of our testimonies, presenters. We average about 11.1% of our referrals being accepted by area post acute facilities. What is this caused? And Dr. Lumby mentioned this in his presentation. This has caused our, our patients to stay longer in, in, at Waterbury Health. There's been a difficulty in, in, in finding these placements. As they stay longer in the parlance of the post acute facilities, they fall out of level. Where's that? They may not be as cute to record, to, to meet the needs for an LTAC facility. They, they, they could have used and should have gotten a more immediate IRF level of care, if not really accessible in this market. Instead, they then go to other providers, not getting optimal care and, and therefore probably suffering more than they needed to suffer and not having the functional improvement that they could have had if they had access to IRF services. Again, what's critical in this application is the distinction between IRF services and LTAC services. And in our needs analysis, we tried to, to determine that while again, looking at where, how our referrals go. Even in the skilled nursing facility population, we've only get 14% of our patients placed. That has caused especially during this pandemic period, a growth in our average length of stay at the hospital. These are, these are the issues, lack of access to care. And, and honestly, the, the distinction between LTACs and IRFs, Kristen Smith did a good job of pointing that out. And, and I think that's, that's evident in, in, in our needs analysis. Dr. Lumby mentioned a group that's coming, an expansion of the neuroscience service line here at Waterbury Health. Just so you understand that Waterbury Health has always done neural surgery, but they've made a commitment, a significant commitment to expand that service line by recruiting additional neurosurgeons and, and bringing a total approach to neural sciences, which will only enhance the number of patients attracted to that service and then therefore requiring post acute, post acute care services. And we believe that's very positive for, to demonstrate need for an inpatient rehabilitation facility. And I want to turn to my, my point about the application will not result in unnecessary duplication of services. It will not negatively impact the diversity of healthcare providers, including skilled nursing facilities. We really do not believe there'll be a shift in what, what is going to SNIP because provide the same level of care that, that IRFs do. Now, as you heard, there is some overlap sometimes in, for long term acute care patients with IRFs. But again, it, what you've also heard is distinctiveness of the pre admission screening that goes on and the authorization that happens whereby a PM and R physician for patients that require IRF care. We believe that this is, this will distinguish us, this, this hospital from others in the area and not create an overlap. Waterbury Health discharge planners, though I've said before to you, have their, have had many reasons for their denial of cases to, to these other services. Patients either have too many skilled needs for SNIP or the patients must require one to one or a sitter or they have excessive behavioral issues. These are some of the barriers that we have from a SNIP. Now, taking that same fact, and what are the barriers that we have had for admitting patients to Gaylord and to hospital for special care? Number one, both facilities have a limited number of Medicaid patients that they can take. This is a practical basis. And Gaylord's testimony, they, they indicated and showed a very practical approach to what happens to discharge plan. We have had difficulty in placing patients that either are, that either Medicare or Medicaid secondary or just pure Medicaid. Also, the patient's ability to wean or fail to already be weaned from the ventilator prior to acceptance has been an issue in getting those patients in. Or patients are just purely ineligible. They're not sick enough. Because they have to be sick enough to maintain a 25 day length of stay. And those are, those are some of our issues, barriers to get access. I know I've heard about a hospital, obviously I'm aware of that hospital, Mount Sinai in Hartford area or New Haven's, Yale, New Haven's facility in Milford or Danbury's. Many of those hospital systems, they take care of their own patients. They focus on their own patients, their own system's patients. Another barrier to range. And then it's the issue of the chronic disease hospitals. And you know, when I worked for and CEO at New England Sinai Hospital in Stoughton, we were originally a chronic disease hospital in the state of Massachusetts, not the same as Connecticut. But that was just a distinction, a license distinction by the state, similar to Connecticut. But we were in LTAC. LTAC has distinct regulations by CMS. Majority of the revenue of these institutions are Medicare. You need to take that in consideration. The other thing I'd like to now talk about is a relationship to the existing community. And what makes this application is that, that partnership between Waterbury Health and, and Pam. Waterbury Health is, is really been an active community partner. I've heard questions about their for profit status. As you know, if the transaction goes through the Yale, New Haven, that will be changing. But as a for profit administ, uh, status, just to give you some background, again, context, I want to give you the context of who I was. I was Waterbury Health's first CEO when Prospect acquired that. I was here two, two tenures here. That first year of Prospect ownership and then again in 2029, 2020 to 2021, 21 as a CEO. But one of the things that Prospect did is not only invest $57 million into the facility, but also promote and develop a continuum of care. And I think that's important to understand how this inpatient rehabilitation facility will be part of that continuum of care. We have the VNA Health and Home here at, in Waterbury. We have Access Rehab, which is the largest outpatient rehabilitation service in this 23 town area. We, we have access and great relationships with the local skilled nursing facilities. But most importantly, we have Alliance Medical Group, which is over 100 physicians, most of those being primary care physicians, which are part of this greater Waterbury Health. I also want to comment about population health. And I talked about the services that we can provide. But one of the new, new neat things that Prospect and Waterbury has invested in heavily is the development of the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership, which is, which is a coalition that focuses on improving the population health needs of the community. This partnership produces a triennial community health needs assessment and uses that, uses that to implement mitigation strategies to improve health equity in, in, in the area. Waterbury, Greater Waterbury Health Partnership also includes a program which was developed here at Waterbury Hospital called Waterbury Health Access. This is a sub program within the partnership which provides free or low cost medical assistance to the uninsured, underinsured, insured patients of the greater Waterbury area, ensuring that underprivileged households have access to conventional medicine. This is accessing patients both in the hospital and in our emergency room that need other services. We're unique in doing that. When Connecticut developed the software system called Unite Connecticut, we were the, we were the main beta site because of this program and because of our investment in this community. And so that's how, that, that means the difference between a, a community hospital that's part, as a partner in this adventure and that believes that this will aid in the delivery of care in the community. So let me just conclude with the value of the proposed Pam Waterbury IRF to Connecticut, the overall health system. It will provide timely access to IRF level care that has demonstrated significant benefits to patients who will receive these services. Number one, fewer readmissions to acute care hospitals, improved functional status of the, of the patient and, and, and the discharge to their home and a high increased likelihood of return to the workplace and to the workforce. Again, I'm just concluding my, that we believe that overall this will be a huge benefit to the greater Waterbury market area. Thank you. For allowing me to just.
Okay. At this point, we will move to cross examination by the intervenor hospital for special care.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novy. Just a few questions for Mr. Shindell. Mr. Shindell, I'm, I'm looking at page five of your pre filed testimony and the first full paragraph on that page. Can you turn to that?
Go ahead.
And you say there, when, when considering these data and you're referring to the Waterbury Hospital discharge data, the following, please recall that during the pandemic, CMS and the state of Connecticut agreed that LTAC hospitals could waive 2016 CMS rules regarding required three day prior ICU stay and thus accept IRF qualified admissions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that your testimony?
I said, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear you. And then you go on to testify that this waiver no longer applies. LTAC hospitals cannot accept IRF patients unless they have certified IRF units. Is that correct?
I stated that correct.
Okay. So you're aware of the intervenor petitions and the pre filed testimony that both Hospital for Special Care and Gaylord Hospital have submitted in this proceeding, right?
Yes.
So sir, are you saying that Gaylord and Hospital for Special Care officials are testifying falsely when they say they admit patients that qualify for IRF level services to their hospitals and they don't have IRF units in their hospitals?
Okay, that, I will correct my, my statement that, that, that is true during the waiver period. But I believe they still have to maintain a 25 day length of stay within that, that period. They, that what was waived was the three day ICU stay. And, and other than I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that that waiver period will be ending on December 31st of 2020.
Okay, so even on the waiver, you were wrong, right? It's still in place, correct?
It's in place for a couple of months, yes.
Okay, thank you. After that waiver expires, are you testifying today in front of the Office of Health Strategy that Gaylord and Hospital for Special Care would be violating CMS rules if after this waiver expired, they continue to admit patients that qualify for IRF level services into their
I am not, I, I am not making that statement. We have again, in our testimony, indicated to you the difference between traditional LTAC patients and IRF patients and that again, long term acute care hospitals admit patients that qualify for long term acute care hospital care and that is not patients that traditionally go to IRFs.
Okay, I'm glad you qualified that because your testimony to OHS, your testimony says LTAC hospitals cannot accept IRF patients unless they have IRF units. So that's wrong, right, sir?
No.
Thank you. Let's, let's move to page eight of your testimony, sir. And I'm in the fourth paragraph there. You have that in front of you?
I do now.
Okay. So there you say similarly, you testified, I should say, Hospital for Special Care and Gaylord strictly accept a limited range of patients, ventilated or tracheostomy patients for pulmonary rehab and physical therapy, occupational therapy services. Do you see that?
I do, yes.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you the same question. You're aware of the submissions by these two hospitals. Are you saying that the officials from these hospitals are testifying falsely in front of OHS by saying for physical therapy and occupational therapy services, they admit patients who are not ventilated and who are not trach patients?
Let me clarify your statement. I'll read that sentence again that you, you indicated. Similarly, Hospital for Special Care and Gaylord strongly accept a limited range of patients. That's not all the patients they accept. In our experience here at Waterbury Health, they have, majority of their patients have been mostly pulmonary and ventilated or tracheostomy patients because those are the patients that meet, strictly meet LTAC criteria. They do accept other patients, but not, I did not say all their patients. I said, the word strictly was meant to be except a limited range of patients. Again, mostly ventilated or tracheostomy patients. So I will correct your statement. And I, I really don't appreciate that, some of the approach that you're taking on this. But that, that is, that is really what I said. We do know that your hospital treats other diagnoses, but the majority of patients are ventilated or tracheostomy patients.
Okay, and thank you for admitting that. And thank you also for admitting that your use of strictly would have been misleading at best to this.
Hold on, hold on.
At best, had it not been clarified by you.
Okay. There's no question yet. You did not ask a question. You've been making a statement. I'm going to allow the objection to come in. Or sorry, Attorney Cowherd, I'm going to allow the objection to come in because there wasn't a question asked yet. You just made a statement thanking him. So.
I did, I did.
Yes.
And let me, may I, Attorney Cowherd?
No, no, you cannot talk to him through me. Everybody, remember.
Officer.
Through me.
I have been subtly, potentially reprimanded through Attorney Cowherd for speaking of objections. I believe that this is inappropriate, an objection to, to take his words and, and qualify it and change it as an admission. If he has an objection to what was said, he can state the objection. But to argue with this witness and characterize his testimony that was fully explained is inappropriate.
Okay, so I'm going to just remind everybody that cross examination is questions that you have for the other parties. It is not long thankful statements that may or may not contain other information that we are also trying to get into the record at the same time. So I would ask us to all give, be polite with each other, give the same courtesy that you would expect your witness to get. And just remind everybody that we need to have questions at a cross examination. That is the whole point of a cross exam. So let's keep it to questions. All right, Attorney Cowherd, if you have a question.
Doily noted, Hearing Officer. I have no further questions for this witness.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will go on to cross-examination by the intervenor Gaylord, limited to 19A-639 criteria.
Thank you so much, Hearing Officer Nobby. I have a few follow-up questions for you, Mr. Shindel. You talked about the partnership and the cooperative that is either in the works or has already been established for trying to address the specific medical needs of the Waterbury community. And you talked about charitable work and you talked about the Medicaid population. The older Medicaid population, the over 65 Medicaid population specifically. Again, if I could refer you to the chart that's listed as OHS Table 6 on page 73 of the application. And let me know when you're there.
Yeah.
All set? Okay, so my question is, again, I'm looking at the Medicaid line for the projections for the PAM IRF facility. And it indicates that in the first year, the acceptance of Medicaid patients would be 1.6% of the total population accepted. The second and third years would be a maximum of 8% per year. Do you see those numbers?
Yes.
And so that would be the cap, or so to speak, or the maximum number of Medicaid patients that the PAM anticipates taking in order to meet its financial needs. Is that correct?
I would not identify that as a cap. I would identify that as a forecasted, financial forecast of 8%. It could be higher, it could be lower. It's just that right now, this is a pro forma financial statement that is forecasting what the Medicaid percentage will most likely be in the first full year of operation and the second full year of operation.
Okay. Got it. Okay, and then my next question for you is the charitable cases that you referenced that you felt that Waterbury Hospital, I think you indicated, accepts a significant percentage of charitable cases. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And if you look at the data on here, I believe those charitable cases would fall under the terms uninsured or self-pay. Is that correct?
I didn't do this pro forma, so I can't, I can't comment on that.
But in your 43 years of experience, is that where those?
Excuse me, it could be either there or it could be in other. So I again, did not, I did not do this pro forma and you're right, they probably could have been in that category. But in this pro forma, they could be under other.
Okay, but you don't, you don't know because other is not actually identified. Actually, it is. It says includes self-pay, workers' comp.
Insurance, so it does.
Auto-insurance and letters of agreement. Is that right?
That would be the category that it would be.
And so, but other is not defined as charitable cases, correct?
Yes, based on this. But again, I did not do this pro forma, so I really have to. You're asking the wrong person. I didn't do this pro forma.
Oh, I understand. I'm just, you mentioned that one of the goals.
Again, charitable care, you know, sometimes located in charitable care, it could be a part of self-pay. I am not the one who did this pro forma, so I can't comment on where that possibly could be in the pro forma.
I understand. And what I just want to clarify for the record that under the categories uninsured and self-pay on this chart, whoever prepared it, it shows that there's nothing there, right? So the data would indicate that there are no, there's no indication of a plan to accept charitable cases in this data, in this chart.
Again, I'll say it again, I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't develop, I can't, I can't comment on that.
Understand. But my question to you was that it is important to you as someone who is considering the unique nature of the patient demographic in the Waterbury area, which you describe yourself as a significant number of Medicaid recipients. And if that's the case, I'm asking to show me where in the application it reflects PAM's commitment to servicing the Medicaid population.
If we go back to what Waterbury does through its Waterbury Health Access Program. We do a lot of conversions of patients to the Medicaid program within that Health Access Program. So we assist patients in getting authorized to Medicaid. That's number one. Number two, by this pro forma having really twice the traditional Medicaid percentage of a typical hospital of this sort. It is, they are making a larger commitment. Also, they include the self-pay in that other category, which is another 10% in self-pay and workers' comp. So in that, in the pro forma. But again, pure, we do a lot in the front end to qualify patients for Medicaid, providing them with services that we can in the home. Most of these patients that use IRFs are Medicare patients. That's the majority of patients. There is, there are, there is another 15% or so and traditionally come from commercial payers. And then a range of other payers that make up the difference. But again, I did not do this pro forma. I'm just commenting. My comments now to you from my experience as both an LTAC administrator working in an IRF system as well as being a hospital acute care CEO and understanding the difficulties and barriers that hospital acute care CEOs face in making placements to facilities.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. And so then, you don't know where I can find in the application any evidence or any indication of the commitment that PAM has to assisting Medicaid and/or charitable cases?
I would like to.
Medicaid.
Can I defer that question to my PAM counterparts? I really feel that they're more capable in making that statement about the facility than I am.
Okay. And I just wanted to check to make sure I heard something correctly. You indicated that there is the traditional definition of a patient who is qualified for an IRF setting and a traditional definition of a patient who qualifies for an LTAC setting. Do you recall that testimony about what's traditional? And would you agree with me that in the state of Connecticut, at least with respect to the two intervenor hospitals that are here today? That some of the, what you call the traditional IRF patients are in fact being treated at the other two, these two facilities, at the intervenor facilities?
No more.
So there is not a bright line in the state of Connecticut between patients who are treated in an IRF setting versus patients who are treated in an LTAC setting?
There is a distinction in those communities that have access to IRF care. So in those communities that have access to IRF care, I am sure the acute care hospitals in those communities or the systems that have access to IRF care are, you are making that distinction between an IRF and an LTAC. In those communities, in our application, the 23 communities that we serve, there is not access to IRF care. And we've made that statement multiple times today and in our application. And as a result, that lack of access has caused a lower use rate of IRF services.
And when you say, if I can clarify, you indicated a lack of access. So if you've got a 23 municipality-proposed service area, but if there are empty beds in the next town over at the Mount Sinai facility, for instance, you're still calling that a lack of access?
I do because as you know, the distance to get, it may be not as far, a number of miles to get from Waterbury to Hartford. It is not an easy commute. And so many, many patients find that, especially of the age group that we're talking about and their family members find that difficult to access those beds in Hartford, yes.
And then one other question. If you could take a look on page four of your testimony at the chart that you identify as Table 1. And that relates to the rate of denials, or I should say the rate of acceptance of patients from Waterbury Hospital? You see the, you know the chart I'm talking about?
I have it right in front of me.
Okay, great. You indicated that the Waterbury's discharge planners have difficulty identifying a facility that would be willing to accept one of Waterbury's patients based on the particular needs. So you're having trouble finding a bed at Gaylord, or you're having trouble finding a bed at Mount Sinai or one of these other facilities. So they end up having to go out of state. Is that accurate?
It is accurate.
And again, the out-of-state facility that you're sending the patients to based on this chart, the one in New Jersey, that's a LTAC, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so then sending these patients out of state, you're not sending them to an out-of-state IRF, correct?
In this case, no, yes.
Now, is it possible that the Waterbury Hospital discharge planners are reaching out to all types of facilities for one patient? And so therefore, that kind of drives up the way the numbers look for the denials. So you have one patient, they call each one of these facilities, and they are denied for each one of those facilities?
I.
Hold on, don't answer yet, sir. Don't answer yet. Let your attorney lodge his objection.
I'm objecting on the basis of speculation. I believe Dr. Lundby testified and Mr. Shindel testified about what has been, they have learned and gleaned firsthand from the discharge planners. But I think that question calls for speculation.
Okay, I can rephrase the question.
All right, we'll take the rest.
My question then to you is, in your conversations or in your efforts to do reconnaissance with the discharge planners, did you inquire whether they were making phone calls to every facility in the state looking for a bed to discharge a Waterbury patient?
I believe they do, but I'm not, again, if your question's regarding the basis of this chart and it's if the number of referrals to a particular facility, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. No, and we can actually look away from the chart because I think you answered my question. My question was, when the discharge planner is considering what options are available to a Waterbury patient, they are essentially calling around all facilities to see whether there's a bed available for the patient. Is that accurate?
I believe that, again, that's out of context. I think what happens in a discharge planning process, I think this is true not just at Waterbury, but just about every hospital. They will start with the appropriate level of care, the right level of care. And they will try to move that patient that has those criteria that can be met for that level of care. As the delay in the discharge planning occurs, because the patient cannot be admitted to that level of care, they then start seeking other levels of care, other facilities. And as a result, then as our patients are now lingering in the hospital, they will eventually get to the site that will eventually take this patient. But I believe in the, and I know for a fact that in the beginning of the discharge planning process, they are sending the patients to the appropriate level, attempting to send the patients to the appropriate level of care.
Okay, and so just to tie up that issue, they start out looking for a placement in a facility at an appropriate level of care. And if that fails, or there are no beds available, or they're denied for some reason, then the discharge planners will look to other types of facilities for a bed that may not be in that appropriate level of care.
They are again, attempting to figure out why there's maybe been a denial, why there's been a lack of acceptance. I don't want to say it's all been denied, it's a lack of acceptance. So then they will seek wherever they can now find a placement for this patient that will meet the patient's needs. Now that, because of a lack of access to inpatient rehabilitation hospital care in this region, they are trying to put together the appropriate post-acute care plan for the patient. And that can be complicated, but it's very patient-specific around what they can tolerate, the needs they have, what the family members or support they have that can help them at any different level of care. It is not a straight, I wish it was very clear that only these patients go to LTAC, only these patients go here. What happens is, because we have a lack of access to inpatient rehabilitation facilities, we are unable to get those patients adequately placed.
And I think that's exactly what I was asking, what I wanted clarification on, which is that even though the PAM and Waterbury Hospital applicant have described LTACs and IRFs as having two completely distinct populations, Waterbury Hospital is actually looking for beds anyplace if there is no bed available in the appropriate level of care.
I'm going to object to the form, but to the word "anyplace."
Another, a bed in another facility, even if it means it's outside the appropriate level of care.
I did not say that. I said that we were looking to place the patient to meet their care needs, their post-acute plan of care that, as long as they stay in the hospital, does improve over time. And you make that clinical decision based on what their post-acute care needs are. Now traditionally, and this has been stated, I think Kristin Smith stated in her presentation, and Adam stated his as well, that an early intervention to an inpatient rehabilitation facility results. And it's been shown an improved patient outcomes, which the patients are not going to get by lingering in an acute care facility or going or not being able to get into an LTAC. For whatever reason, they're not getting into the LTAC, lack of access. And then, but at some point, it is not, in all points, it is not to their benefit to stay a week or two weeks in a hospital, in an acute care hospital, when they're not able to get the access to rehab therapies that they should be getting. And that is true, as they stay longer, as their needs go, the discharge planners and case managers of a hospital work with the family, work with other resources to try to put together an effective post-acute care plan.
I have no additional questions, Hearing Examiner Nobby. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have one redirect, if I may.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Hearing Officer, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay.
There was a lot of, Attorney Letty asked you a lot of questions about a chart about, you know, charity care and stated that she could not find anywhere, or was asking you to find somewhere in the application a discussion or description of the intended or any discussion related to the intended charity care. Can I refer you to page 45 of the application? And Mr. Shindel, while I understand that you are not the author of the, at least we're not the author of that chart and perhaps are not the author of this description of underserved groups in response to question F about discussion how low-income persons, racial and ethnic minorities, disabled persons and other underserved groups will benefit from this proposal. Do you see a, at least a one and a half and maybe longer page description of, and discussion of the answer to that question?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. No other questions?
Okay, all right. So at this point, we are done with the applicant's witnesses. I would like to go into the intervenor before we do that. I'm hoping that we can get through one intervenor's group of witnesses prior to lunch, if possible. Or if everyone can agree to go on till 1:00 PM and then take lunch from 1:00 to 2:00, is that something we can all agree to?
Certainly.
That's fine.
No objection on behalf of Hospital for Special Care, which would go first, Attorney Nobby. But could I ask for a 10-minute break before beginning that?
Sure. Okay, so we will take 10 minutes now. Just remember to please turn off your video and mute yourself so that you are not heard during the break. We'll be back at 12:21. If you did not hear that announcement, we are now recording again via Zoom meeting. And you're staying in this hearing means you consent to being recorded. At this point, we have finished the applicant's portion and we are moving to the intervenor. Um, at this point, we have finished the, uh, the applicant's portion, and we are moving to the intervenor. Um, I would like to get through the first intervener before lunch. So let's see what we can do. We go past one, then we will take a shorter lunch, um, so that we can get to everybody. So now, we will go, we will move to the intervenor, um, Hospital for Special Care. I know that you said earlier you waived an opening statement. Would you like to still maintain that position?
Yes, we'll save that time for closing remark to move the hearing along, especially given the lunch, lunch schedule, Hearing Officer Novy. So, um, again, I'll just introduce, uh, the witnesses I have with me on, on the camera. We only have one camera station here at the Hospital for Special Care is Lynn Ricky, the CEO and President of the Hospital for Special Care. And also testifying today will be Dr. William Pesch, who is the Chief Medical Officer. But I also want the hearing officer and OHS staff to know that we have other leadership in this room off-camera that are here to assist if needed, uh, the agency in this, uh, hearing for this application. And I'm happy to introduce those individuals now, or wait until it may come up that they are asked to, uh, you know, provide some information to the agency. Leave that to you.
Uh, okay, wait, Attorney Cowherd, am I, are you calling them as witnesses, or what is your intent?
I am not. My, my attempt would be if there is information solicited either by the agency or the applicant on cross, at least in my experience, if there is other availability of that information that is, uh, available to a applicant or a intervenor, then they can ask the hearing officer whether that individual could speak to the agency, and that individual would be placed under, you know, oath for the purposes of just that discrete information. That, that was my purpose in, uh, alluding to those other individuals.
All right, so, um, we will get to them as needed, and then if they're needed, I will swear them in and, um, have them say their name and job title for the record.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, with that, if I could please have you, um, if I could please have you zoom out so I can see both, um, of your, of your witnesses, uh, at this time.
Well, well, we'll
There, I'll say. Or at least, at least put the two that I'm going to swear in, so I could see them when they put their hands up.
That's very good. They're right here.
Okay. Oh, I see, too. Okay. Hello, um, if I could have, um, is it Dr. Rick, uh, Ricky or?
No, it's Lynn Ricky.
Lynn Ricky. Okay, Ms. Ricky and Dr. Pashy, please raise your right hand so I can administer the oath. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and put your hands down now.
All right, at, at this time, uh, Hearing Officer Novy, I'd like, uh, Ms. Ricky to just summarize her prefile testimony for the Office of Health Strategy.
Well, before she does that, if you can, um, say whether you would like to adopt your prefile testimony?
Certainly. Yes, I would, thank you. My name is Lynn Ricky, R-I-C-C-I. I'm the President and CEO at Hospital for Special Care, and I hereby adopt my prefile testimony. Um, by way of background, I am a healthcare executive with over thirty years' experience in the post-acute arena in both skilled nursing facilities and long-term acute care hospital. Um, I speak to you today as the CEO of Hospital for Special Care, which is an organization that has been around over eighty years and serves a, a population of patients that is extremely vulnerable. In fact, we serve an eighty-eight-zero percent Medicaid population, um, across all of our different service lines. And that, those service lines include babies through geriatrics. Um, we are quite a unique setting. We are two hundred and thirty-six bed setting. Um, we are the fourth-largest long-term acute care hospital actually in the country. Um, we have a long history of filling gaps in service and, in fact, work with every acute care hospital across the state. And, uh, also, we believe partner very well with the state of Connecticut in helping them fill gaps in service, um, that have been identified, um, over many, many decades. So today, um, I'm going to comment on three areas of concern with the application. The first area of concern has to do with what we believe is the overlapping duplication of rehab services. We wholeheartedly agree with our colleagues at Gaylord uh, that this application, uh, actually would create duplication of services, and we do not believe, uh, that there is a need. If you, we also have concerns about focusing on the quantity of IRF beds in, among Connecticut providers at this time. We feel it's not an accurate metric of whether or not residents in the proposed service area actually have access to the level of care that is needed. In fact, the twenty-twenty-one MedPac Commission report determined that the lack of IRF beds does not necessarily equate to a lack of care capacity, and we would agree with that. We've talked a, a bit today about the Mount Sinai, um, rehab facility, which is operated by Trinity Health currently and has been operated, um, since nineteen ninety-five. That facility, uh, is most similar, um, to the applicant's description and actually runs at about a fifty-seven-point-five percent utilization of their bed capacity, um, and that's based on the twenty-twenty-one CHIME report. We believe that the Hospital for Special Care provides services in virtually all of the clinical areas that are being proposed by the applicant. In fact, over the past five years, our short-term rehab units or acute units have had an average of eight beds available on any given day. While our census certainly surged, uh, during COVID, as all hospital census did, we have still not returned to our pre-pandemic census volumes. In fact, fiscal year twenty-three is showing a marked decline in our average daily census from twenty-twenty-two and a greatly increased capacity to be able to care for patients across the state. We also have concerns about the characterization or mischaracterization of the treatment uh, and services of the patients in the identified, uh, patient care areas. The applicant cites that there were a total of four hundred and fifteen referrals from Waterbury Hospital over the prior three-year period in their application and indicate that there was a five-point-one acceptance rate. But our hospital data indicates a much lower number of referrals and a significantly higher acceptance rate. During Hospital for Special Care's fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, which was, of course, the height of COVID, the hospital received only one hundred and forty-one referrals from Waterbury Hospital, and we accepted thirteen-point-five percent of those referrals. Fiscal year twenty-two, the hospital received fifty-seven referrals from Waterbury Hospital, and we admitted twenty-six percent of those referrals.
I'm sorry, what was that? You, um, I'm just taking notes. Fiscal year twenty-two, you had fifty-seven referrals?
Correct, with, uh, and we admitted twenty-six percent of those referrals.
You know what that number is?
I do not, um, have that. I can grab that number for you, certainly.
Go ahead, sorry.
No problems. Uh, so we don't believe that data on the acceptance points to any lack of access uh, in, in patient rehab services. In fact, the most common reason for these denials, and I, uh, don't always, but I often sit in on our admitting meetings, uh, with Dr. Pash and the clinical team, and the reason for denial is that they don't meet the requirements for our level of care. They are not appropriate, uh, for our level of care. And what I mean by that, although I'm not a clinician and Dr. Pash can speak to that, is that patients have to be stable in order to come to our level of care, and in fact, they do participate in rehab. And the, we have also referenced the, uh, criteria for LTAC-level patients in terms of the CMS criteria. So the reason for denial, uh, is not about bed availability, but rather about appropriateness for our level of care. We also believe that it's inaccurate in the application that was submitted to indicate that the changes, uh, which it indicates two thousand and eighteen, but it was actually two thousand and fifteen, um, prohibit LTACs from accepting patients, uh, who don't meet the, uh, twenty-five-day length of stay requirement. In fact, we can take those patients, and we, unlike the IRFs who have a sixty-fourty rule, we in fact have a fifty-fifty rule. So fifty percent of our patients must meet that criteria. So in two thousand and fifteen, the Medicare IPBS reimbursement, on which continues to be in place, uh, we, in fact, expanded the LTAC's opportunity to take patients, um, to our broader level of care. And, and just a response to your question about how many patients have, fifteen patients from Waterbury that were, uh, admitted, so that's the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
We also, um, want to, uh, clarify the inaccurate, uh, assertion that the hospital discharges a few patients back to the community. In fact, sixty-one percent of all of our total hospital discharges, uh, return to the community. We strongly believe that, uh, this application, if approved, would not only negatively impact uh, the Hospital for Special Care's viability, but also would negatively impact other uh, systems within, uh, the surrounding areas. We feel strongly that, uh, Pam's application would compete with the hospital and other existing, uh, providers for that very small number of Medicare and commercially uh, insured patients, um, remembering that the Hospital for Special Care runs an average daily census of over eighty percent Medicaid. In fact, today, it is eighty-point-three. Um, so any erosion of our very small, uh, commercial or Medicare census would have a significant financial impact, negative financial impact, on the Hospital for Special Care. And the population that would be most impacted, uh, if we were not in existence or we were not a viable institution, would be those eighty percent Medicaid patients from babies through geriatrics who solely, in many cases, rely on the services that we provide at the hospital. A mere one percent erosion in the either Medicare or commercial census is that it would equate to a two-hundred-thousand-dollar annual impact to the hospital. Really importantly, um, as a CEO and any other CEO, uh, in the state or the country, um, I would have to say that one of my biggest concerns is that the facility that Pam is proposing would in fact, uh, further strain our ability to attract and retain the competent workforce that we need to care for these very critically ill or very compromised patients. Uh, I think the data that Ms. LaBarber, uh, attaches to her testimony really says it all about the environment, uh, in terms of the competitiveness of trying to find qualified healthcare workers. Uh, our hospital is proud to have been named a top workplace for the last ten years, uh, and even with that, continues to struggle to hire, uh, patient, staff to care for the patients, not only that we have, but we have a ten-bed unit that is closed and has been closed for over a year and a half now because we are unable to staff that unit. We have a long history of partnering with academic, um, institutions, not only in Connecticut, um, but actually in New England. We have seventy established, uh, affiliations with, uh, various academic institutions for all levels of our disciplines that we serve here at the hospital. The Hospital for Special Care has used travelers, uh, to our chagrin. It's not something that we have done in the past, but we have used travelers. We have used shift bonuses that have exceeded three million dollars in the first five months of our fiscal year, and that comes in addition to the two-point-eight million dollars in market adjustments that we have given to our staff in order to retain them, to be able to provide the excellent care to our patients that we are known for. The labor shortage, uh, across the country continues to impact us. I've been asked many times if I feel that this is transitory, and I think that there is plenty of literature that would suggest that that is not the case. And in fact, the rates that we have had to pay have raised our costs, um, significantly, as much as twenty percent in the last three years. So in summary, I feel that it is not the availability of IRF beds that the issue, but rather the dwindling volumes to post-acute care and the staffing challenges we continue to face. Thank you.
All right, so we will now move to cross-examination by the app. Oh, sorry.
Hearing Officer Novy, respectfully, I, I, I think it may clarify matters as, uh, has been done if, uh, Ms. Ricky would just, uh, uh, speak more to the need for stability in those patients at the Hospital for Special Care's level of care. That would speak to patients both who qualify for IRF-level cares as well, that you treat as well as LTAC-level care. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that, that clarification would be helpful.
Sure. So again, at, as a long-term acute care hospital, uh, we, our patients should come to us, uh, stable from the acute environment. We understand that there will be unanticipated changes at times, but we need our patients to, uh, be stable in order to come in and participate uh, in the level of care that we provide. And, and obviously, so that we can keep them here at our level of care. We have limited diagnostics, uh, compared to an acute care environment, so we want to make sure that our pa, patients come to us stable and appropriate for an LTAC level of care.
Okay, any additional, uh, testimony you would like to have your, your, um, witness give, Attorney Cowherd?
No, just to the fact that that would apply to both the IRF level of patients that the hospital serves as well as LTAC level, but beyond that.
Like your patient to, your, sorry, your patient, I'm sorry. We've been hearing a lot about patients. Would you like your, uh, your, um, witness to, uh, to go ahead?
Any patient who comes to the Hospital for Special Care should be stable. We would, we would make that determination that they need to be stable before they come to our level of care.
All right.
We acknowledge the difference between an acute care environment and a long-term acute care environment.
Thank you. All right. So let's go to cross-examination by the applicant, and then we will come back for redirect by Attorney Cowherd.
Thank you, um, um, Hearing Officer Novy. I just have a, a, a few questions I'd like to, um, touch on. Is, is Ms. Ricky, is that how I pronounce it? I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Ms. Ricky, i, i, there's no question that you, you know, you do not hold yourself out or your institution out as an IRF, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You are an LTAC, correct?
That's correct.
And you know the distinctions between an IRF and an LTAC?
I do.
Okay. All right. Um, you speak in your testimony about Mount Sinai, the only freestanding IRF in the state of Connecticut, correct?
I don't think I said in the state of Connecticut. I said in Hartford, is what I believe I referenced.
Okay, but do you, do you recognize that they are the only freestanding IRF in the state of Connecticut? Or do you disagree with that?
I'm not disagreeing. I just didn't point that out.
Okay, are they the, are they the only freestanding IRF in the state of Connecticut?
I believe they are. I, I'm not, not, not sure I'm understanding the question, but I believe they are.
Okay, all right. Um, and you are not in any way affiliated with Mount Sinai, correct?
There is no affiliation. We, we are rent space there. Uh, we have a, uh, one of our units is on the campus of Mount Sinai, but we have no, uh, relationship other than, uh, leasing space from them.
Okay, so you lease space. So you are not here speaking on behalf of Mount Sinai at all?
I don't believe I indicated that I was.
I just want to be sure.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, i, in, in your testimony, you talk about, well, let, let, let me step back. In the, in reviewing the application, did you review the primary service area proffered by the applicant?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay. And would you agree that in that service area? There are no IRF beds?
I believe that there are rehab beds.
Well, is a, is a rehab bed different than an in, an inpatient rehabilitation facility bed?
There are no IRF beds.
Okay, so is the correct answer to my question? In the twenty-three municipal area that was designated as the primary service area. Do you agree that there is no IRF bed?
That's correct.
As an answer, but sir.
Now, in your testimony. Um i- i- in connection with. Both in the petition on your behalf, for which you are CEO. And in the testimony, there are references to the. Um appropriate, well, to the use of Medicare data for purposes of this application. And in particular, what I'm referring to is you refer to the MedPro information. That you would like OHS to consider, correct?
MedPAC.
I'm sorry, MedPAC. I apologize for the mis- the, the misstatement. The MedPAC, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you, do you generally, you as an institution, refer to Medicare? Data and published reports as authoritative sources of information?
Can I ask for clarification and context?
Well, you, 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 you've referred to. Well. Hearing Officer Novi, does my question stand or should I rephrase? It's up to you.
You know, I'm, I'm wondering where this line of questioning is going as well. Um.
Okay.
So maybe it would be best if you rephrased or um offered the question a different way.
Sure. Do you, uh, put it bluntly, you have suggested or proposed. And asserted to OHS. Um Ms. Ricky, that the Medicare, even though it is one component of our need analysis. On behalf of the application, the Medicare-based data. Is not to be or should not be considered by the Office of Health Strategies. Is that correct?
I'm going to object to that as overbroad and inaccurate. There was a specific reference to Medicare in the testimony. And the petition, petition Attorney Monahan, and that was use of the Medicare fee for service. Utilization rate for IRS being applied to the service area and the application.
Okay.
And my question.
Okay, hold on, hold on, both of you. Let me make my ruling because you both, yeah, I, you, you objected. He stated his statement. Um. I understand that the Attorney Cowherd has asked for Medicaid data to come in. I will be making a decision on which, you know, which ways to calculate this are appropriate. Um, I'm going to limit that. I'm going to um sustain his objection. So that question is not going to be answered. Um. If you would love to maybe break it to a smaller question, smaller pieces. Um or re-ask parts of it. That was a very broad question.
Certainly. Well, the, 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 the point I'm getting to is the very specific. As, as properly and well-described by Attorney Cowherd. Um, um, the Medicare information that was, that is being. Um asked to be discounted or dismissed from our calculation. Is something that you agree with, Ms. Ricky, correct?
Are you asking clarification, not an objection yet? Are you asking Ms. Ricky that she agrees that that data that was furnished by applicant? Should be dismissed or discounted in a need methodology? Or are, oh, you are, okay, I just want to make.
Yes, that is correct. I, I am asking that.
Okay. And at the same time, there are. MedPAC, other Medicare-based data on other issues. That you would like OHS to consider in rendering its decision in this application, correct?
I'm going to object again on overbreadth respectfully. What, what are we talking other data?
Attorney Novi.
Everybody threw me, threw me.
Attorney Novi, there's only, just use the two examples. That, that, that Attorney Cowherd has spent most of his time explaining, which is the MedPAC. And, and the, the Medicare information that we used for the methodology. Those are two Medicare um based information sources. It's a simple question. One is being supported by Ms. Ricky as for you to consider. And one is being suggested to you to be dismissed for consideration. I just want to know if that's a true statement.
I am trying to be completely transparent. Uh Attorney Monahan, Hearing Officer Novi is referencing. That two thousand twenty-one MedPAC report is well over one hundred pages. It goes across a gamut of care settings. One of those is devoted to. Inpatient rehabilitation facilities and Ms. Ricky's testimony is clear. That she has asked this agency to take into account. That MedPAC in that very chapter, please let me finish. States clearly that the lack in number of IRF beds in a given locality. Does not equate to whether the Medicare population in that. Locality is being adequately served. And we reference that in the testimony and the petition, and we stand by that.
Okay, I'm going to move us on from this question. I'm going to, I, I feel that both of you have made your points. Without actually having anybody answer this question. Um so we will move on from this question. Um Attorney Monahan, to your next question.
Certainly. Now, you testified, uh or I believe, um it came out during the course of testimony. That there are certain um permissive admissions you can make. During the um. Pandemic period as an, as an emergency order through, at least through the end of this year. Is that correct?
No, I don't. I did not uh speak to uh the public health emergent. I didn't, I didn't speak to uh certain patients being able to be taken. I don't believe that I said that.
You didn't do that in your prefiled testimony. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. On the, you did refer to the workforce um concerns that you have, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um and you, while you have expressed some of your experience. In connection with workforce difficulties and issues. Um, um, you also heard testimony from the applicant about. Um their workforce experience and their ability. Um to deal with that in different locations around the country. Generally, I'm speaking. Did you hear that earlier?
I did, sir.
Okay. Now, you have no doubt, you have no reason to direct doubt the veracity. Of what Ms. Kristen Smith was testifying to when she spoke about her ability to. Deal with various pockets of workforce shortage issues. In connection with both the IRF and the LTAC facilities that they deal with around the country. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Yeah, I, I was going to respectfully, can you narrow that down? Because you talked about deal with issues, Attorney Monahan.
With all due respect, Alition, uh Attorney Novi. I allowed the questioning of witnesses.
I'm, I'm going to, yeah, I'm gonna remind everybody. If you have an objection, it needs to say objection, and this is why. You can't just make statements. Statements are not, and also when you testify in that way, that cannot be considered by me in my ruling. Because coming out of the mouth of an attorney is not testimony from a witness. So, and I have tried to, to, to get you guys to have your clients testify more and less attorney testimony. But I'm getting a lot of attorney testimony, which can't be considered during my decision-making. So remember that. And if you have an objection, objection, my objection.
Can I make it now, Attorney Novi? And again, well taken. My objection is to overbreadth. Attorney Monahan, I can explain or I can just state that that question was overbroad. Dealing with issues regarding workforce shortage.
I agree. Um you, uh Attorney Monahan, you asked for her opinion on testimony from your witness. Which I believe is testimony that your witness gave and she answered. Um. Another witness's feelings on the testimony of your witness is secondhand, so.
All right. I guess what I will just simply say on that and are asked on that is just, does uh Ms. Ricky? Had any factual basis to present here to show? That Ms. Kristen Smith's testimony about their success in dealing with workforce shortages. Is false.
I do not, I have no opinion on her testimony.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
All right. Thank you. Uh redirect by Attorney Cowherd.
I want to just clarify for a moment, uh Ms. Ricky. Attorney Manahan asked you if you had any issues with uh holding. The Hospital for Special Care out as an LTAC and you appropriately said no. But that doesn't prevent you under the fifty fifty rule from treating patients that are outside. Of LTAC criteria, right? And we're also talking about cost of this application. And to not only interveners, but to the health system and the delivery system. Which is a criteria under nineteen A six thirty-nine for this uh application. In your opinion and in your testimony, are you saying that the labor shortage that exists right now? Without another provider that is providing inpatient rehabilitation services. In the proposed service area, that that is a cost driver for the hospital for special care right now?
Absolutely.
Okay, and how big of one is it?
It's, it, I think I, I quantified it. It's uh. Almost six million dollars be- between uh trying to stay competitive. Uh and just stacking the beds that we are able to have open at this time.
No further questions from my end.
All right. Thank you very much, uh Ms. Ricky. Um we will now move to the second um witness. For the Hospital for Special Care.
Okay. Good morning. Uh, my name is William Pesch, P E S C E. And I hereby adopt my prefiled testimony. I'm the chief medical officer as well as the chief of physical medicine and rehabilitation here at the hospital. Um and as a physician specializing in rehabilitation medicine, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to provide this oral testimony today. Opposing the applicant's proposed establishment of this forty-two bed freestanding IRF. Um it's truly been my privilege to manage these patients at Hospital for Special Care. Who need intensive inpatient rehabilitation for uh almost thirty years as a practicing physiatrist. Uh I've also served as the hospital CMO uh over the past three years. And in this role provides me even more of a perspective uh in my daily work uh with patients, their families. And the multi-disciplinary team approach. I, I am the attending of these patients. Or I'm the consultant of these patients depending on the level of care, which there are, they are varied. Um I'd like to at least respond to some of the statements and claim by the applicant. That, that I believe um are inaccurate based on some of the data and my experience. That is, uh that goes over three decades. Um, the, the first is the applicant's statement that LTACs cannot provide uh IRF-level services. It is inaccurate. Uh fifth, uh under this, and we've talked about this, the CMS rules is fifty percent. LTACs must limit only fifty percent of their admissions uh to patients that qualify for an LTAC level of care. Uh that means our hospital does uh have the flexibility to admit and care for patients with a certain level of care. This IRF level uh needs, and we've done so for as long as I practice here. We, we have done it. We, we do it now and will continue to do it as long as I'm here and we're allowed to. Um and, and there is a need for this level of care. That's why they're here. Uh I'm proud to say our outcomes are excellent and the majority of these patients, and I think we heard the numbers of sixty-one percent. Do go home with their families out in the community. These are some of the reasons it's clear that existing Connecticut facilities. Uh us, Gaylord and the other um IRU, um IRF facilities. Uh have the flexibility, uh expertise and capacity to treat these patients that applicant. Inaccuracy, uh inaccurately portrays as being underserved. Uh I would also like to point out, I, I'm, I'm from Connecticut. I tr- trained in this area in New York. I've learned a lot, especially in my role over the past three years, that not all LTACs are the same. The, the Connecticut LTACs are very unique. Um uh i- i- in terms of we are two of the largest, I think we are the fourth largest LTAC in the country. And we provide both int- intensive rehab care, uh rehabilitation care. As well as respiratory inpatient care for the medically complex patients. It's again unusual and somewhat unique uh compared to the national level as most of the LTACs across the country are small. I know there's a couple of large ones, I think the one in Boston that was alluded to, but they don't have the capacity to treat all these uh types of patients. We at Hospital for Special Care, uh down the road at Gaylord Hospital have the expertise. Uh and history for caring for these patients. Um so we are a different type of LTAC. Um it, it's clear to me that the applicant failed to include the information indicating which services that the state. LTACs provide beyond the LTAC baseline requirements. And I think it was talked about by one of the other witnesses that, that HFS, uh although it's not required. HFSC does provide uh our rehab patients with close supervision by uh rehab physicians. Including myself who are trained or certified in rehab medicine. As I mentioned, I'm the attending of some of these patients, consultants on others depending on the level of care. Uh we provide twenty-four hour nursing care, uh three hours of intensive rehabilitation therapy. When appropriate for the patient. We, uh patients get five-day-a-week therapy. And actually on a, a lower level of that six day, they get therapy also if appropriate. Uh in coordination with our patients, we coordinate with our uh patients' community providers, just like an IRF would. Uh and, and despite the assertion that HFSC only provides respiratory, physical and OT needs. For patients on ventilators and tracheostomies. Uh our spectrum of offered service delivers that care and more to patients requiring that intensive rehab. Uh that, that can include a number of specialties, subspecialties like speech, uh speech therapy, uh urology, ENT. Pain management, uh pulmonary medicine. We have orthitis, prosthetics onsite. So we provide all of that as a need arises. We don't treat a diagnosis. We treat the patient in the level of care. Um and we, we have staffing, gosh, we have seventy to eighty therapists, including PTOT speech therapists. Because we have. because we have obviously a number of patients that require that level. As my clinical experience at HFSC shows, the idea that the applicant would offer services otherwise unavailable to Connecticut patients is without merit or foundation, and demonstrates why there's no clear public need for this proposed IRU. In its filings, the applicant has stated that HFSC and other providers create barriers to admission by limiting the numbers of beds for Medicaid patients, requiring patients to be weaned or have the capacity to be weaned prior to acceptance, and also refusing patients with a tracheostomy placed within the previous seven days. That's inaccurate. We may have to refuse a patient that had a trach, but it's not because of that. There's other, multiple factors that come into play. I sit on the meeting every Tuesday, and every day I talk to the nurse evaluators, and I'm the primary clinician to approve these patients for admission, or wonder what else, or say what else we need in order to accept the patient. HFSC has, well, we didn't talk too much about this, but we have the largest, most advanced respiratory care team in the state of Connecticut, and have more collective experience caring for tracheostomies than any other single provider in this state. The existing IRF in Connecticut, Trinity Health Mount Sinai, I think this has been mentioned, it's less than 60% utilization rate, at least according to the 2021 CHIME data. Every day, there are 25 to 26 open beds available for Trinity, 20 to 22 miles up the street, to alone, to use as, for these, these patients that are considered IRF-appropriate level. Lastly, the one, I think this was, well, this was mentioned, and we certainly don't cap admissions based on Medicaid. Eight out of every 10 patients that's here, and that's been here, that number's been pretty stable. It actually climbed over the past three to four years, up to 80% are Medicaid patients. And when we look at patients, we look at clinically. Do they meet the level of care for our hospital, what level, and then we look at insurance, that's secondary. Also, there's an applicant's claim that existing providers will not accept patients that require one-to-one observation is untrue, and actually, over the past couple of years, with today's technology, there are video monitoring systems, our census, whatever it is, it could be different on a day-to-day, but for the month of September, we had about 30 patients that required close observation or some type of supervision that also warranted this video monitoring. I think it was about 15 or 16 patients that needed one-to-one, 24/7. The other patients required this 24/7 video monitoring, so we certainly don't say no to these patients. Approximately, and we talked about the monitoring system. Also, the applicant's argument that the patients in the proposed service area encounter geographic barriers to rehabilitation services, it's unsupported with our data. In my own experience, again, it was one of my primary responsibilities is making the decision about accepting the patient into our hospital. 15% of our hospital admissions over the past five years have come from the same service area as Pam Health identifies in its CON application. And over a third, 36% of these admissions were admitted to our hospital's acute medical rehabilitation units. We provide 25,000 outpatient visits from the same service area from Pam Health proposed over the past five years. And really, I think this, this data shows that residents of the proposed service, they don't find travel to either our main campus or our satellite facility in Hartford a barrier to care. Lastly, just to kind of summarize, this is about patient care. And whether patients are well-served, you know, by the existing delivery system. And, you know, in my three decades of experience and expertise in this field, I truly feel that we can provide any level of care, we have the expertise and the capacity right now to do that. I would like to just share a two-minute, less than two-minute illustration that demonstrates what we do. Basically, it's a story that's, I think, a microcosm of our, our program. We had, we had a patient. I don't know why this is tough. This is the clinical. We had a 40, 40-year-old bariatric patient. Came to us, failed bariatric surgery, lots of medical complications, came to us, couldn't walk, couldn't talk, could eat, and was on IV pain medications. Came from us from Waterbury Hospital, ironically. Was assessed by the rehab team, our multi-disciplinary team, started on physical occupational speech therapy. This patient had a lot of therapy. We did, seen by pain management, urology, internal medicine, had daily visits from me as the physiatrist, also addressing not only the rehab needs, but the pain needs, which is part of rehabilitation. They had weekly team meetings, we had a family meeting within one week, which we do with all patients, either formally or informally, depending on the level of care. And long story short, 28 days of patient returned home with family, along with home services. I understand it's only one patient, but we do that a lot with our patients. 61%, if you want to know the numbers, this one just struck me as, as a good, a good story. You know, that's a good outcome. It's a, we have a very good program, that's the norm for us. I trained with a couple of the colleagues from Gaylord, who are inpatient rehabilitation 30, 35 years ago. I think it's their norm. We have the capacity and expertise to treat these patients. Thanks, Ed. Any questions? Welcome.
Attorney Cowherd, do you have any questions before I go?
No, I think you said it, I just want a moment for my witness, but it's like, no, I'm okay.
Okay, so I will go to cross-examination by the applicant, give you a second, and then we will come back for the redirect. All right, Attorney Monahan?
Thank you. You know, clearly, doctor, I appreciate your, your, your comprehensive testimony about what you perform as an LTAC, which is what you are, correct?
Yes, we are an LTAC.
Thank you. And you are not an IRF, correct?
I'm going to object. It's asked and answered. This is the second witness, this line of questioning has been.
Ms. Novi, we've heard testimony after testimony about, we do everything an IRF does. I want to be clear on the record that while one may be claiming to be able to do any and everything, they are not what we are applying for. So I would like this witness, who has professed so much comprehensive care, to be clear that he recognizes he is not part of a certified IRF. That's my fair question, I believe.
Okay, I will let this question in, but after that, questions to his testimony.
Thank you.
You repeat the question.
Are you a certified IRF?
No.
Now, you mentioned that, well, are you, do you participate in any way in your preparation of your cost reports?
I'm a part of it, but I defer to the experts. While I'm in administration, I'm a clinician when it comes to that.
Okay. Well, would, would it be fair to say, would it surprise you to know that in your 2021 cost report that there was a 97.9% occupancy rate listed for your hospital?
Yeah, it was during COVID, but I don't know the specific numbers.
Okay. Have you ever worked in an IRS?
Yes.
And when was that?
It was probably in the early 90s. Mid, mid to early 90s.
When you did that, did you ever engage in pre-admission screening for IRF patients?
No, I did not.
Now, when you see, you described seeing patients who could qualify for IRF services, you do, you did say that you see them at Hospital for Special Care. Do you engage for those patients in pre-admission screening?
Yes, I do. Basically, I'm looking at the patient, does he or she meet the level of care?
For what service level?
For an IRU, or an IRF, an LTAC, any patient. We don't look, I don't look at just the, the level or the program. I'm looking at the patients, the patients presented to me, and I evaluate that and see where this patient, where we can help this patient.
Now, I may have a moment, Ms. Novi?
Yes.
Now, I believe you had, you referenced the, what you described as a relatively, that there was occupancy available at the one freestanding Mount Sinai IRF in Hartford, correct?
Correct.
Do you have any personal involvement with the executives at, at Trinity or Mount Sinai to understand why that occupancy level is at that occupancy level?
No, I do not.
You do believe, it sounds to me, but you do believe in providing patients with the optimal care at the optimal time in the optimal facility, correct?
Correct.
Did, and excuse me if I, if I'm just looking for clarification. Did you, or did you not say that you have a certain amount of beds designated at Hospital for Special Care for patients who would qualify as, under Medicaid, Medicare's certification criteria for IRF services?
There are those numbers. We don't achieve those, we have capacity, but there's numbers by CMS that.
I'm asking you if you have a certain number of beds in your facility that you designate as set apart for persons who meet IRF certification?
No.
If you had a patient arrive at your facility who was, based on Medicare certification, qualified for IRF intensive rehabilitation services, and you were not able to provide services for that person, for whatever reason, for whatever reason, would you have any hesitation to referring that patient to an IRF if a bed is available?
I'm going to object, Attorney Novi, that is calls for the broadest speculation. We're not talking about any criteria for this particular patient. So I don't know how a clinician could answer that hypothetical speculative question. Objection.
May I respond?
You may, to me.
I believe the IRF certification requirement is a very clinical set of elements, as determined, as, as made clear, both through this doctor and other testimony, and in all of the materials, both by petitions and petitioners and the application. It's a simple question. The doctor has stated that he has, he has the ability to serve as someone that he believes has an IRF certification criteria. And what I am asking is, if he wasn't able to do that because of full capacity, would he have any hesitation of sending that person to a true IRF? It's a very.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, I'm gonna withdraw my objection.
Okay.
Attorney Novi, I'm withdrawing the objection, but that, that was based on a new, his question now, Attorney Monahan's question, takes into this facility is at full capacity. And with that.
So we wouldn't take a patient like that, as much as we can help them, if we're beyond that capacity, if CMS tells us, we would not take that patient.
Of course, in not taking that patient, would you have any hesitation in referring that patient to another IRF facility certified by Medicare?
Well, it wouldn't be our patient, so we couldn't do that, but I can certainly tell Waterbury Hospital, Hartford Hospitals, that we can't, that then they know that they have to go to that level and look for a bed for that patient.
I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification. I have no other questions for this witness.
Okay, redirect from the Intervener Hospital for Special.
Yeah, I'll try and keep it quick, respectful of everybody's lunch hour or shortened. There was a reference in the questioning to the cost report for fiscal year 2021, where it showed certain occupancy and, and utilization rates at the Hospital for Special Care. You were here, was that during the height of the COVID pandemic?
We were stacked, it was very challenging.
And why were you so? Were you helping out the healthcare delivery system in other ways during that time?
Well, before we unfortunately can't open a certain unit, we made that into a COVID-19 unit. So we had hospitals calling, I had CMOs, other administrators call me, call Ms. Ricky to see where, what, what we can do to help, and we just provided assistance to take some of these patients that were sick but medically stable. They were appropriate, at least that we can take them, although we never had this, this was, this was a new precedent for us.
Thank you, Dr. Pesce. And then the applicant's attorney also asked about your role in assessing patients for the appropriate level of care. And when you look at that level of care, you're talking about the IRF-level services that Hospital for Special Care can and does provide, as well as LTAC level of care. So you're not, you're talking about the gamut of what the patients that you can assess for admission to this facility, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question, I'd like you to expand upon this a little bit. Attorney Monahan asked you about the right patient. Attorney Monahan asks you about the right patient in the right facility at the right time. Speak to that triumphant, and how it would apply to a patient that qualifies under I R F level criteria to come here and you admit him. What, 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 what type of care do you think you provide? The, the patient that comes here under an I R F level is a patient that recently had some type of debilitating, whether it was a neurologic disorder, a medical complication. They are sick but stable. They could, in my assessment, could tolerate three hours of therapy, five days a week, that there's a discharge plan, a goal of home discharge, and we can do this in a short amount of time. But if they can't, if we can't do that within a two-week period of time, that's not considered I R F level. One final question, Dr. Pesch, when you talk about that patient, do you make a distinction in terms of the resources that you bring to bear for an LTAC patient and what you have there for even the more acute patient? Do you provide the same resources to that I R F level of care patient? It's, yes, there are, there aren't set staff for an LTAC patient or, they all manage them. We decide when the patient comes in, what they need, and we provide it with them, whether it's the therapy piece, the specialty physician piece, the nursing, the wound care. And we do, I, I don't want to, you know, say, I'm sorry, we have a lot of these resources, but we could take care of a lot of these patients, and we do. No further questions, thank you, hearing officer.
All right, so it is now 1:23, we will take a break for lunch, we will come back at 2 P M, at which time we will go to our Intervener Gaylord Hospital for their witnesses. We'll try and get through those before we go to the community, the community portion. So I will see everybody at 2 P M, please remember that if you leave your camera and your microphone on, anything that you, that you have could be heard during this time, thank you. All right, as we all just heard, this meeting is being recorded. It is now 2 P M, we will come back for the afternoon session. While we wait for the, the community signups, we will go ahead with the final portion, some more of the technical portion, and we will just make sure everybody is back. All right, we will go ahead with the counsel for Gaylord. If you would like to, please identify all individuals by name and title who are going to be testifying today. Are they all in the room with you?
Yes, they are. Okay, thank you very much, Hearing Officer Nobe. Today with me in the room, who are going to be testifying on behalf of the Intervener Gaylord Specialty Hospital is Sonia LaBarbera, it's L A, capital B A R, B E R A, who is the current president and CEO of Gaylord. And also with me today is George Keryaku, who, that's, I'm gonna do that one for you also, it's K Y R I A C O U. And he is the current Chief Strategy Officer for Gaylord, and was formerly, formerly held position of CEO of Gaylord until 2018. So I'm going to let them take over as the witnesses.
All right, I'm going to ask that you both please raise your right hand, so I can swear you. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your pre-file and the evidence that you will give in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead and put your hands down now. All right, so I would just like to remind you that when giving your testimony, please make sure to state your full name, and to adopt any written testimony you submitted prior, on the, that you've submitted on the record prior to testifying, and also if you use acronyms, to please define those for the benefit of the public and clarity of record.
Okay.
All right, Attorney Letty?
Ms. LaBarbera, you've submitted your pre-file testimony, and I assume that you adopt that in whole?
I adopt my pre-file testimony on file.
And is there anything that you would like to focus on, or any additional information that you would like to provide?
Yes, so good afternoon, Hearing Officer Nobe, in the Office of Healthcare Strategy. I hope everyone enjoyed their very brief lunch break. As you just heard, my name is Sonia LaBarbera, I am a licensed speech-language pathologist, and I am the current president and CEO at Gaylord Hospital. In the interest of time, rather than reading my testimony, which you all have before you, I would like to just review only a few highlights that I think are relevant based on the conversation and the testimony from this morning. I would like to start off by saying first and foremost that I do not contest that there is a difference between services and level of care provided at an I R U, inpatient rehab unit, an I R F, an inpatient rehab facility, and an LTAC, a long-term acute care hospital. But that is not a bright line, as described by some of the prior witnesses. A lot of discussion this morning was on what Medicare requires for the different levels of care, and I would like to make clear that that is the minimum that we must provide. However, referring back to the chart on page seven of Ms. Smith's testimony, and I'll wait for everybody to find that chart. If everybody has that in front of them. Gaylord would be able to answer all of the top five requirements in the affirmative. Close medical supervision by a physician trained in rehab, 24-hour rehabilitation nursing, patients must require an acute care level, three hours of intensive therapy per day, five days a week, and medical care and therapy provided by a physician-led multidisciplinary team. In fact, as a CARF, which is the Commission on Accreditation of Rehab Facilities, as a CARF-accredited specialty hospital, we are required to meet all of those factors, and in fact, we exceed those requirements. Gaylord, as a long-term acute care hospital, can provide an intense, as intensive an amount of therapy as any single patient can tolerate. In fact, it is not uncommon for a patient to come into Gaylord only tolerating about one hour of therapy, but as they progress, they can get as many as four to five hours of therapy, at least five days per week. That therapy is similar to the I R F, in that it is a combination of physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech-language pathology. What I believe my written testimony demonstrated is that there is a significant overlap in the populations that could be served in either setting. And therefore, the addition of 42 inpatient rehab facility beds in our service area would negatively impact the volume of admissions, and therefore, the financial viability of Gaylord and other existing providers in the state. When we look at the diagnostic categories that are admitted to a rehabilitation facility, compared to the actual diagnostic groups that were admitted to Gaylord over the past eight years, there is an overlap of 49, 49.7%. While it would be expected that the sickest of those patients needing post-acute care would go to a long-term acute care hospital, and the least severe would go to home or a skilled nursing facility, based on the Medicare severity of illness data that I submitted, there is a significant overlap in the severity of illness three category between long-term acute care hospitals and inpatient rehab facilities. Boiling that down and making that very simple, there are a large number of patients who could qualify and do qualify for either level of care. If Waterbury Hospital were to divert even a small number of those patients to the proposed rehab facility, while there is still capacity in the state's other organizations that are capable and willing to care for those patients, it would have significant impact to those facilities. Keeping in mind that there will be an overlap in patients, for Gaylord specifically, in 2019 alone, we admitted 244, that's 244, patients from the applicant's identified service area. That represents 17.4%, of Gaylord's total patients for that same year. As Waterbury Hospital has an ownership interest in the proposed facility, it is very likely that they will refer first to their own facility, and that the number of patients who will be discharged to Gaylord will drop. We have seen this before, right here in the state of Connecticut. In 2018, Hartford Healthcare opened a 26-bed inpatient rehab unit, which is the same level of care being proposed here. Gaylord saw our patient referrals and subsequent admissions drop significantly from that referral hospital. Admissions dropped about 20% in the first year, and have continued to drop every year since. And you can see that downward trend in my exhibit F. I believe that drop in volume demonstrates the overlap population that we are describing. I will end my oral testimony there, because everything else I think has been covered, or is in my written testimony.
Okay, Attorney Letty, do you have any additional questions for your witness?
No, not at this time, thank you.
All right, so at this point, we will go ahead to cross-examination by the applicant.
Thank you, Attorney Nobe. And I hope I pronounced it correctly, Ms. LaBarbera.
Very close, it's Barbara with a L, so LaBarbera.
LaBarbera, okay, LaBarbera.
Thank you for the effort, Attorney Monahan.
You, you just mentioned in, in your very well-put-together summary, the, the fact that there would be, if we were, if the applicants were successful in implementing this 42-bed I R F, it would have a significant impact, not only on Gaylord, but on, and I think you described it as these facilities referring to Mount Sinai and other, other hospital-based units that had I R F beds, am I correct?
That is correct, I was referring to Mount Sinai, which is the freestanding I R F, all of the hospital-based I R Us, Gaylord Hospital, as well as Hospital for Special Care.
Okay, now, none of those other entities obviously are here as intervenors, correct?
Other than Hospital for Special Care, that is correct.
Right. Now, can you tell me, before your testimony today, did you, did you interview anyone at Mount Sinai about the significant or financial impact it would have on them?
I did not.
Did you, did you interview or acquire any kind of financial analysis of any of the hospital, acute care hospital-based units, I R F units, to determine what financial impact this applicant's facility would have on their basis, on their, their?
I did not do that analysis.
So, is it, so it's fair to say that, that you're, you're rendering your opinion on that, correct?
That is my opinion, based on what we saw occur at Gaylord Hospital after the Hartford Hospital I R U opening, correct?
So it was based on your experience at Gaylord Hospital?
Correct, and the fact that there is still capacity based on the C H A data in the other hospital-based I R Us and the other freestanding I R F in the state of Connecticut.
Okay, and then based on that Chime data, did you go out and interview those facilities that have, as you described, capacity to determine why it is that their capacity is not being utilized?
No, I did not.
It, is it fair to say that the primary point in the summary that you just made was that the addition of the applicant's 42-bed I R F, if approved, would be a detrimental financial impact on the revenue of Gaylord Hospital?
Can you repeat that question?
Yes, is it fair to say that the, the, the point that you are making, or a critical point that you are making, is your concern that the applicants, if it's approved, if the applicant's application is approved and this 42-bed I R F is allowed to be constructed in Waterbury, Gaylord Hospital will suffer a financial revenue hit?
That is one of my concerns, yes.
Is there any other hospital, whether it's an LTAC or an acute care hospital, that you view yourself in competition with in terms of having patients referred to you to increase your revenue as opposed to increase their revenue?
Not sure I understand the question, can you ask that a different way?
Who are your competitors?
For this particular overlap population?
No, who are Gaylord Hospital's competitors as an LTAC?
I'm going to object to the form, because we're assuming that the patient she's talking about, the I R F, people who, people who qualify for an I R F do not qualify as LTAC patients. So these are all LTAC patients, the same pool.
Right, so that's my question, as you're all LTAC patients coming in, but to your facility, because you are an LTAC, my question is very simple. Gaylord Hospital, who would you, who do you identify as your competitors?
It really depends, and I don't mean to be difficult here, it depends on the patient population we're, we're talking about.
Well, you certainly, we don't even exist yet, our application, the application has not even been granted, and you're already referring to the PAM Health Project as a competitor that potentially could cause a hit on your revenue, correct?
So, correct, for those patients that have a rehab diagnosis that are in that overlap category that could qualify for either an I R F, I R U, or LTAC level of care, our competitors in the state of Connecticut are Hospital for Special Care and all of the hospital-based I R Us, as well as Mount Sinai, for that overlap population.
All right.
May I ask that question?
Yeah, so is it, is it fair to say that you, in your role and all of the financial analysts that surround you in your organization are analyzing what impact is happening to Gaylord Hospital as a result of either increasing capacity or decreasing capacity at these other institutions, whether they be acute care hospital or whether they be standalone LTACs?
I'm going to object again, I just don't, I don't understand the question, so I'm not positive that my client understands the question.
I'll make it simple.
Please do.
I'll try to make it simple. I'm sorry. You have, you have spent a lot of time clearly focusing on the potential financial impact of this application.
Correct.
Do you and your staff have a regular business operation of analyzing your competitive standing with other hospitals and LTACs and the one freestanding I R F in the state of Connecticut?
If I'm, if I'm understanding your question right, I think the answer is no, we do not have a regular meeting that addresses those concerns or those points.
So do you just wait for some impact and then analyze them?
Question, I'm not, again, I'm not sure I understand, what do you mean by impact? Objection. I'm not, again, I'm not sure I understand. What do you mean by impact? You know?
Financial impact.
I'm not sure where this line of question is going.
I'll conclude it right here. I will conclude it, Hearing Officer Allen. Thank you. What I wanted to just be sure of is that I understood that even though you don't have regular, before this application was filed, while this application is filed, it sounds like you don't have regular meetings about what the financial impact of other existing competitors are on your bottom line. It sounds to me that you did put an enormous amount of effort into finding out what the potential financial impact of this application would have on your institution. Is that correct?
I think that is correct, yes.
Thank you. I have no other questions of this witness.
Thank you.
Okay, redirect by the intervenors counsel, Attorney Letty.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Novy. I just have a quick follow up. You were asked, this is LaBarbara, about the, whether or not you had done a financial analysis of the potential impact of this application on other facilities other than Gaylord. Is your understanding that there would be a financial impact to institutions other than Gaylord? Is it fair to say it's premised on the basic assumption that a drop in patients is going to result in a drop of revenue?
That is correct.
And at this point, in terms of the financial analysis that you put into addressing this application, is it fair to say that the current status of capacity and utilization in the state of Connecticut is such that there's, there is still capacity, there are still beds that are available. And so what you're evaluating is the impact that putting additional empty beds, so to speak, into the mix would cause for the entire state, for all facilities that address this particular population?
That is correct.
Was there an objection?
There was an objection. I'm sorry. I, it, and I, in the, in the spirit of the type of hearing this is typically would refrain from a very leading question, but that the very leading question about there being empty beds, I think is a huge assumption that was put in the as an assumption before the, the witness that I do not know the witness had ever testified to. So I object to the question as leading and without foundation.
Okay, well, it's, it's the redirect. I'm going to allow a bit of leading. I've allowed, I've allowed everybody to pretty well lead their clients on the redirect without, without overseeing too much of that today. In fact, remember telling one of you guys that you, is that something you would like your witness to say? So I'm going to allow the question.
Thank you.
And then the last question I have is, when you're talking about the, the, the patient group that would be impacted by this application, if it were granted, what was the percentage that you said of patients at Gaylord that this would impact? What is that range?
Forty, the overlap diagnoses were 49.7%.
And that is
Of our total population for the last eight years.
So that would be a significant hit if a percentage of that, roughly 50% of your business was to be deflected to a new facility?
If even a portion of that were diverted to another facility, that would have significantly negative impact, correct?
I have no further questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. LaBarbara. I'm going to go ahead and move to your next witness. Do you guys want to change seats or?
We're going to rotate so that everybody can see us.
No problem. Okay, if I could have your next witness, please state his name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted prior to testifying.
Hello, my name is George Kariakko and I adopt my prefiled testimony.
All right, go ahead.
Before you get started, I just want to ask you if there, if there was anything more that you would like to say about the testimony that you've supplied so far?
Yes.
And go ahead.
Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Novy and staff of the Office of Health Strategy. My name is George Kariakko. I have over 45 years of experience with both short term acute care hospitals and long term acute care hospitals. And currently am the Chief Strategy Officer for Gaylord Hospital. Rather than reading my testimony, as everyone has said before, which you have before, that you, I would like to review some of the highlights that I think are important. First, with regard to the failure to show clear public need. As I noted in my testimony, the applicant's need analysis starts with on page 41. The population over 65 assumes the population will need beds at the national admission rate and the national average length of stay for Medicare and calculates need of the remainder of the population in proportion to the needs of the population over 65. Based on my experience at Gaylord Hospital and reviewing years of Medicare data and looking at Connecticut Medicare data and clinical practice compared to national Medicare data, I believe the applicant's analysis is incomplete and not reflective of Connecticut utilization. The practice of extrapolating national traditional Medicare utilization to Connecticut and not factoring in the significant differences in the utilization of Medicare Advantage beneficiaries compared to traditional Medicare beneficiaries and not factoring in the actual Connecticut utilization for both Medicare populations is wrong and results in a bed need analysis that is incorrect. We know from the federal government's own data that Medicare Advantage beneficiaries have a much lower utilization of inpatient rehab facilities than do traditional Medicare beneficiaries. We also know that based on Connecticut clinical practice, LTACs and IRFs have lower utilization and SNFs and home care have higher utilization than is true nationally. And lastly, there is a higher penetration of Medicare Advantage versus traditional Medicare in Connecticut as compared to the nation as a whole. Based on these additional data elements, which I believe need to be factored in, the applicant is being unrealistic when they state on page 72 that, quote, IRF use rates for Medicare beneficiaries in the area will increase to the 2019 national average, unquote. As a result, we are proposing an alternate, what we believe is a more accurate way of calculating need for IRF services. I modified the applicant's original bed need analysis and incorporated the additional data elements I referenced in my testimony and created two alternative bed need analyses. The first incorporates 2019 national Medicare Advantage data, while the second analysis incorporates the actual 2019 Connecticut traditional Medicare and Medicare Advantage data. Because Medicare Advantage IRF utilization is so much lower than traditional Medicare IRF utilization on which the applicant's analysis was based, both of my analyses show a much lower need, bed need, 32 beds using national Medicare Advantage data and 14 beds when Connecticut traditional Medicare and Medicare Advantage utilization data is used as compared to the applicant's figure of 46 beds. I would also like to point out that using the applicant's own chart on page 38, if you can look at that, table eight, even in Connecticut's counties where IRFs, IRFs are currently present, utilization does not even come close to approaching the national level. Even Fairfield County, which is the highest county in the state, the IRF utilization is still significantly below the national level. We leave it to the hearing officer and to OHS to consider what we offer as an alternative model and hope you will consider that additional information. With regard to the impact on other providers, I don't believe that the impact on other providers was adequately addressed by the applicant. As I noted in my testimony, there is conflicting data in the applicant's submission. And I refer to tables one and two of the completeness responses. But they ignore that Gaylord, as well as other providers, already provides care to a significant population in the 23 town target area. And they are not addressing the reality that they would channel patients to their own IRU that would otherwise have gone to Gaylord and other providers. The experience that my colleagues, Anya LaBarbara, referenced with the opening of the Hartford Hospital IRU in 2018 and the resulting drop in admissions from Hartford Hospital reflects that reality. For the reasons set forth in my testimony, I respectfully request that OHS deny the application.
Okay, Attorney Letty, do you have any questions you'd like to ask before I go to the, the cross exam?
No.
All right. Okay, we'll go to the cross examination by the applicants.
Okay, thank you. And please, can you repeat your last name for me?
Kariakko.
Kariakko. I, I I just get embarrassed when I say the name wrong and then have to be corrected, so I asked ahead of time, okay?
It's probably, it's probably not correct within the context, but George is a lot easier for everybody.
I had practiced a lot also, so.
Okay. In, in conducting the, the, the need analysis that you just summarized for us on, on your end, you talked about using Medicare Advantage data and general Medicare data, correct?
Correct.
This is, okay. And and why did you use those sources of data?
Well, as the applicant states in their own CON, 70% of the business of IRFs is Medicare, so I thought it was an effective use of the data to actually use Medicare data.
Okay. And do you think that other analysts in, in, in a similarly situated position as you, whether they be employed by hospitals, LTACs, IRFs, consultants, would also view Medicare data as you viewed as, as, as authoritative data to at least conduct a need analysis for IRF beds?
Well, you know, not being negative here, but the applicant themselves used Medicare data in premising their whole analysis. So I assume, I assume they believe that Medicare data was appropriate to use. I just used a much more detailed and Connecticut specific set of Medicare data.
Okay, but before I go on with that, you do recognize that the Medicare data analysis used by applicants was not the only methodology used for need analysis, correct?
Yes, but I also recognize that, as was stated in the CON, 70% or more of the patients are Medicare.
Okay. But I just, I guess I just wanted to be clear that when you had said the applicant used the Medicare, that you understood that there were other components to the need analysis that was, that, that was put forth by the applicant. You at least recognized that?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thank you. Now, you did say that when you did do the Medicare analysis, is there, if I just use the short, instead of saying Medicare Advantage and general Medicare, I just use the Medicare analysis that you summarized. You said you came up with a need of 32 beds and 14 beds?
Correct.
Okay, so your analysis, so your analysis, while, while the applicant's analysis came up with 42 beds, your analysis in at least one aspect of it came up with 32 beds in terms of need, and in a second, the number 14 beds, am I right?
When I actually applied Connecticut Medicare to information for both traditional Medicare and Medicare Advantage, that's when I came up with a 14 beds. So I did several layers of analysis. The first was when I applied national Medicare Advantage information to the analysis. And the more appropriate analysis is using actual Connecticut Medicare information for both traditional and Medicare Advantage populations.
Okay, so, so then in the, in the range from what you consider less appropriate to the more appro, to, to the appropriate, your range was 32 to 14, correct?
Correct, at 80%.
Okay. Did you, do you have a, or keep a record of the both the national and the Connecticut Medicare data sources that you utilize to permit you to come up with those need numbers?
Yes, we use a data company in Washington DC. And we purchase the Medicare database. And they do a lot of the analysis and parsing of the data reporting and report back to that information to us.
Okay. And while this may be an appropriate question for the hearing officer, and I don't want to burden you with it, but if there were a request that, that, that the hearing officer would later entertain about a possible review of data that led to your conclusion, would you have any objection to somehow working in collaboration with, with the agency and us in, in delivering that information?
No, no. We believe that we own the data and we're more than happy to share it with OHS if it's requested.
Thank you. And forgive me if this is obvious to you. I know it's been asked of other witnesses, but you, you clearly recognize that there are other, that there are IRF beds in the state of Connecticut. Do you recognize or do you agree that there are no IRF beds in the primary service area of the applicant?
Physically located in the 23 towns? Yes, there are none physically located in the 23 towns.
Thank you. I have no other questions of this witness.
All right, it'll go back to a redirect by the intervener Gaylord.
No further questions, no redirect. Thank you.
All right, Attorney Letty, I just realized that I did not ask you if you wanted to make an opening statement. I do apologize for that. I will give you the option to make one now, if you would like, as well as your closing later.
I'm going to pass one because I think my witnesses will stand on their testimony and I could not have said it better.
All right, I do apologize for, for not doing that earlier. All right. Um, all right, so at this point, um, we will move to questions, um, from OHS. And I will, I just want to make sure everybody's witnesses are still present. Um, counsel for the applicants, are your witnesses still present?
One, two, and I, yes, I believe, uh, Kristen Smith is still available. Uh, yes, and, and I am now looking for, and, and maybe I'm just missing, they're, okay, and yes, we have everyone here available for you, hearing officer.
All right. Um, counsel for the interveners, um, hospital for, uh, special care, do you have all of your witnesses, um, available?
Yes, we do, hearing officer.
All right, and, um, hospital for, um, I'm sorry, Gaylord Hospital, I just, I see yours two are still in the room, so we are all set. Um, all right, so at this point, I'll turn it over to, um, the analysts.
Good afternoon, all. Um, my name is Annalise Fialla. I am the analyst on this docket and I am going to proceed with asking some questions. Um, my first question is, the applicant provided their need methodology in Attachment J in the application. It shows that in 2021, fifty beds would be needed. Please explain how the applicant identified that forty-two was the appropriate number of beds needed.
May I have a moment just to, to, to determine which of the witnesses, um, is best to respond to that?
Yes.
Smith, are you available to respond to that?
Yes, I am available to respond to that. Um, so despite the fact we determined there's fifty beds available, we've worked with Waterbury in this partnership and, um, build our, our, build our rehab hospitals. Um, typically in the, most of our rehab hospitals are in the forty-two to forty-eight range. Um, we recognize as well that, you know, there, um, are opportunities to expand beds and we do, um, build our rehab hospitals with the potential to expand as needed, but certainly don't aim to shoot for the very highest, um, bed, um, need that we come up with. And typically, as I mentioned before, we typically staff it or, or build the rehab beds in forty, in the forty range is our, is our typical rehab size across the country.
Thank you. My next question, um, earlier this morning, Ms. Smith discussed a facility in Delaware that is now operating at ninety-eight percent capacity after opening. Ms. Smith mentioned that the utilization of these services was not significant prior to opening, since the services were not available at the time. I understand that diagnosis, level of care, patient history, et cetera, is what would determine what facility slash services would be needed. However, does the applicant know if the opening of that Delaware facility shifted patients away from other non-IRF facilities in the area?
To other non?
Correct. Like, did it shift, did the opening of the Delaware facility shift patients away from other non-IRF facilities?
No.
That was heard, Kristen, you have to repeat your.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it did not shift away from non-IRF. A lot of those patients were going to Maryland to receive rehab services. So we were able then with that opening of Dover, retain patients in the Delaware area versus them going out of state to receive services.
Thank you. Um, my third question, the applicant referenced veterans throughout their prefile documents. Uh, what percent of veterans are in need of IRF services, specifically in Connecticut, if available?
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to defer that possibly to Lester and/or Dr. Lumby, specific to the veteran population in Connecticut. We find that it varies based on, um, military base, San Antonio has a very high, uh, we, we have TRICARE, we do see a lot of veterans in, in certain, in certain pockets. So, you know, again, w- we adapt to the communities that we serve. If there's a high veteran population, um, there in Waterbury, we are able to do that and we've done that successfully in those markets.
Yeah, and I, I mean, speaking specifically from my position, I'm not aware of the answer to that, unfortunately.
I don't know either.
You know, if I may, um, Ms. Fialla, Fialla and Hearing Officer Novi, we did have a consultant, um, who worked very closely, um, with this group in, in assembling data and analyzing data. Um, if, if now is an appropriate time, it would be, uh, I, I, I would welcome the opportunity to file a late file to answer that question. Um, because I have a feeling that we could get the baseline data from that person who assembled the resources that led to that inclusion of text.
And else, Fialla, would you, would you appreciate that as a late file?
Uh, yeah, that would be great. Um, in that late file, could we also then potentially get what percent of veterans that need those IRF services actually pursue getting those IRF services also?
Thank you.
Um, so moving on to question number four, if approved, does Pam Waterbury expect to contract with the VA?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, on page eighty of the application, Pam Health at Waterbury states, hiring practices and adopted programs from Waterbury Health will strengthen a diversity program that represents the rich culture of the service area. Please explain what are the adopted programs and the diversity programs from Waterbury Health?
So, and again, I'm, I'm going to just turn this over to, um, Dr. Lumby and/or Lester on any specificity, but what we've done in the past and what was submitted in the application are their diversity, equity and inclusion policies, their programs that they put in place. So we would adhere to those and adopt those in the new rehab hospital.
We, 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 of course, have similar types of processes, um, as was just mentioned. But I will also, um, point out that, uh, we are very much involved in the community in terms of working with high school, local high schools, community colleges to draw on local people to, that are, might be interested in healthcare jobs. And that's another way for us to, uh, participate with the community and involve them. Uh, actually very exciting stuff that we're doing with, uh, you know, the city of Waterbury, for instance, uh, under Neil Oler, Oleris' leadership.
Thank you. Um, on page two ninety-five, in the first completeness letter response, the applicant shows that eighty percent of the referrals will be from Waterbury Hospital. So I have three questions based on that. Is the eighty percent coming from the hospital or from the physicians working at the hospital?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find the page here.
Sure. Two ninety-five.
You know, this, this is a pretty straightforward answer for me, since I kind of know the workflow, it, it's from the.
Go ahead.
The case managers will make the referral, physicians, uh, will only make the recommendation of what level of care the patients are required to have. So we have case managers that do all of that stuff.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry, go, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's from the hospital, like Dr. Lumby said.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then what is that eighty percent based on?
So the eighty percent volume there is based on, um, our historical data with joint venture partners.
Thank you. And then have plans or has an agreement for referrals been established between Pam Health at Waterbury and Waterbury Hospital?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last question, actually, sorry, there was four questions for this one. Um, so on table twelve, it shows that five percent of referrals will come from other area hospitals. What are those other area hospitals?
I, I think primarily, um, St. Mary's, uh, potentially Griffin, um, and the neighboring hospitals in the, in these neighboring communities. I know there has been some expression of support from some of these facilities just based on the need, which we've all talked about today.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question, are there transportation agreements being developed between Pam Health at Waterbury and Waterbury Hospital?
Not at this time. We, we won't pursue any agreements, transfer agreements, referral agreements until we are further along in the process, if this hospital is approved.
Understood. Um, my next question, if a patient presents themselves to Pam Waterbury and is uninsured, will Pam Waterbury assist the patient with becoming insured?
Yes.
Yes, like Lester said a little bit ago, that's something that we do very well and I think we're leading the state in, in these efforts. A lot of good work has come from Waterbury in that regards.
So the Greater Waterbury Health Partnership is a unique entity that we're part of, St. Mary's is part of, and.
Staywell.
And Staywell Community Health Center is part of. And in that entity, there's, there's a sub-ed program called Waterbury Access. They do is they, they help patients convert from self-pay to Medicaid or whatever other levels of social support that they need. And that's what, that's what the intention of that, that partnership does. And they really been a model of, of community integration for achieving that. And it's, it's one of the basis of what was a program called Unite, Unite Connecticut, which was being promoted by both the state and the state hospital association.
Thank you. I know charity care was discussed earlier this morning. Um, the applicant states that one point four percent of gross patient revenue will be allocated to charity care patients. Does the applicant expect this to grow as the organization becomes more profitable?
The actual percentage to grow?
Correct.
It depends, it, it, that was just our estimated. So again, I think we've mentioned this before, we are, we're, we're payer agnostic and, and determine needs based on patient presentation, not payer. So if it, if, if, if the need continues to grow, then yes, that would grow.
Thank you. Um, what is the average cost per day for IRF services for both all payers combined and split up by payer type, if possible? So that includes commercially insured Medicaid, self-pay and Medicare?
Our costs per day don't change by payer. So, um, typically our, uh, costs per patient day run around twelve hundred per patient day. And it doesn't change per payer. We, we treat every patient the same. We don't change our resources or costs by payer.
Um, page three hundred and thirteen of the application, so that would be in the completeness letter response, um, shows that, shows that historical cost for commercially insured in fiscal year 2020 was one thousand five hundred and seventy-four. Um, at the top of this, the title of, or the, the title of the chart was not filled out. So we are asking, what is this for? So it says average cost of blank per self-pay and average cost of blank for commercially insured. So we're just asking, uh, that the applicant fills in the blank.
I apologize, could you repeat the page?
Sure, um, it is page three hundred and thirteen. It's in the first completeness letter response.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm reading, oh, I see what you're saying, it's fifteen seventy-four, historical.
If it, if it, if no witness right now can answer that, I don't want to guess. Um, I think it's something we could quickly, um, and, uh, fill in again with, with looking at a prior draft or the consultant's, uh, input to answer that very appropriate question. So, uh, I would hope with the other late file, we can tack that on as a, as a easy answer.
Absolutely, um, the other part of that question, so it, we had asked about, um, the, from another Pam Health location, just to get, because this is a project, this is a, um, newest, new, this would be a new facility, so we asked for cost data for other, for another Pam Health location. So if you could just then also clarify which Pam Health location this would, this information was for.
Okay.
Um, my next question is, on page sixty-five, the applicant states, the developer Catalyst will absorb land acquisition, construction and development costs and own the property. Catalyst will lease the developed hospital and land back to the applicant. Um, what OHS is looking for is the agreement or contract between Catalyst and the applicant.
The lease, is that what you're speaking to?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be another late file, if possible.
Yes.
And then the last, which is also going to be a late file, would be to provide a legal structure slash organizational chart for Pam Health at Waterbury.
Will do.
Um, I have no further questions.
Steve, any questions?
Uh, yeah, this is Steve Lazarus. I just want to go back and just follow up on a couple of things that were brought up by, um, Annie, and just going back to the eighty percent, trying to get a better understanding of the eighty percent from Waterbury Hospital. Can you talk a bit about how that eighty percent was based on? I know you touched, briefly touched base on that, I just want to get a better understanding. How was that developed?
Sure, there are a couple of things that would go into that. First of all, um, um, what we see that come out of acute care hospitals to, um, uh, from a discharge percentage out of the total population discharged out of an acute care hospital is five percent. Um, four to six percent is national average, so we typically take five percent. Um, and then certainly, given the fact that we are a JV partner and they do not have any access at this point in time for these types of services and what we see historically with our other JV partners across the country, um, which we have several, uh, joint venture partners, is, um, that percentage that go to rehab. The first, you take the percentage that are appropriate for rehab and then the percentage that would come to this rehab hospital. That's based on our historic, it's just, it's based on our historical experience.
Okay, so you're taking five percent of the overall, huh, Waterbury Hospitals discharges?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know there was a question asked, but, um, I believe charity care and it was talked about one point four percent of the gross patient revenue. What is the average for existing Pam Health, uh, facilities? There are not, not in Connecticut, obviously, but outside, just to get an idea. Because I said, you said this is sort of a, a starting part, point, and you want to see, it could grow as you move forward.
Hey, I don't know the average across all of our hospitals, it really is market specific. So we, we accommodate and adjust based on the, the charity population, the underserved, et cetera. So I, I mean, I can certainly have our CFO calculate our current charity average across all of our hospitals, but I don't know across thirty-five hospitals off the top of my head what the percentage is.
Okay, I, I think that would be helpful to get as a late file, just, you know, an average of what other facilities.
Yes.
Pam Health facilities.
Yes.
That could be late file number five, I believe.
Five.
Sorry, can I just interject really quick about one of the late file requests that I have?
Go ahead.
Um, so one of the late file request was about filling in that table. Would the applicant be able to just give a brief synopsis also as to what the table then represents? I know that Ms. Smith said that the average cost per day was 1,200. And so I believe what we were looking for, for the OHS tables is the average cost, I guess, for the service and obviously patient stay longer than one day. So if you could just give like a brief synopsis, what this, what the money actually indicates, that'd be great.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, I think you had said it was $1,200 a day?
I estimated 1,200. I see.
Estimated.
About 1,300, yes.
Okay.
And it may, and, and that may change by the service area as well.
Okay.
Salaries and so forth. I'm sorry.
Question regarding what the, the previous Annie's question regarding the average cost. Are you looking for the average cost of, for, for an episode of care, a full episode? So if it's $1,300 a day, are you looking for what we think the average cost of care per episode for, for a typical patient would be? So if they stayed 12.8 days, you know, we would bill 13 days at $1,200, $1,300 a day. Looking for the average cost per episode? Or are you looking for what would be included in that? $1,200?
Both, ultimately. Um,
average cost per day is going to come from the cost report or the pro forma. And so she, we, they could probably be able to give you it based on all the expenses divided by the number of patient days. Be able to have that and then also be able to give you the average cost per episode of care.
Perfect. That'd be great. Yeah.
And I'm assuming that's a blended type of rate for all the payers, not just not broken out.
Cost is different than revenue.
Right.
Cost, cost. If you're talking about cost, the cost is the cost. Doesn't matter what payer it is. You're talking about, you're talking about rates and rate payment. That would be a blended rate. You're right. Then we would look at what would be the blended revenue for care as opposed to the cost of care.
Yeah, but so that would be perfect to provide that for the, as a late file. Thank you. That's all the clarification I needed.
Okay, Steve, are you done with questions?
Yes.
All right, I have two additional questions. The first is for the applicant. Do you have any letters of physician support from the community? Yes, I believe they were in, in the application.
Well, there should have been a number of letters from the physicians in the original application.
Yes. Okay. Do you want me, do you want me to refer to where those are? There's?
Um, no, I have the application.
Okay, yeah, they're in there. They're, they're included in the application.
Okay, and then I have one question for the intervenor Gaylord. Uh, I, my question is of the 244 in the PSA, what percentage of those patients came from Waterbury Hospital and what percentage came from Bristol Hospital?
I do not have that data at my fingertips, but I'm happy to get that to you.
Yes, we'll take that as a late file.
Perfect.
And that's it for my questions. Check with Ms. Capozzi and see if we have any signups.
Sorry, no, no signups.
Okay, all right, so we have no, no one signed up for the, for the public portion of our, of our hearing today. So I'm going to take a quick pause just for a second, make sure that we can get our list of late filings together. And then if we could take a quick 10-minute break and then come back, we will go on and continue with the rest of the hearing, okay? All right, so I will see everybody at 3:12. All right, as we just heard, the Zoom meeting or our hearing is recording again via Zoom. If you have any objections to being recorded, please exit the meeting at this time or exit the hearing at this time. And so it's now 3:13. We'll go back on the record. At this point, I would like to ask for follow-up by the applicant on questions posed to the applicant.
I'm sorry, follow-up on?
Yeah, add the questions that we just, that, from OHS that we just asked.
I, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, and I apologize if I'm not. I thought that we had tried to give the best answers we could orally, that we are going to follow up with a late file on the questions that we couldn't answer. And I personally don't have any additional information at my fingertips to add to what was asked.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted to give you a chance if you had anything you wanted after the, the pause, if you had anything else you wanted to offer.
I, I, I very much appreciate that, but we did chat about it and we took comfort in the fact that we will be able to answer those questions thoroughly and fully in the, in the late file. The, the one housekeeping question, I guess, on that I, I have is whether, you know, I think we all took good notes, but whether there will be anything coming from OHS that spells out those late file requests.
We'll get to that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Please hold that for, for a second if you can.
Okay.
All right, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and ask the intervenor, Hospital for Special Care, if they have any follow-up on the questions that were posed. I know we didn't pose any questions to you, but.
No, we're none here for follow-up, prepared to give our closing remarks at the appropriate time, hearing officer.
All right, thank you. And any follow-up by the intervenor Gaylord on the question that was posed to you?
No follow-up as, as with the other interviewer, we will save our remarks for closing.
All right. So we had no public participation, so we will skip over that portion of the hearing. I'm now going to have Annie read a list of documents to be submitted as late files.
Thank you. So the documents that we are looking for, we have five from the applicant and one from Gaylord. For the five from the applicant, number one, what percentage of veterans are in need of IRF services in CT and in the PSA for the last three fiscal years? Page, number two, page 313 of the application, we are asking that the applicant fill out the blank in the chart, provide a cost per treatment and cost per day for the 35 facilities and for this location, and to provide the assumptions. In addition, we're asking what Pam Health location was the historical data, cost data for? Number three, provide a copy of the lease agreement between Catalyst and the applicant. Number four, provide a lease, a legal structure slash organizational chart for Pam Health at Waterbury. And number five, what is the average charity care percentage for their other 35 facilities? And then the one late file that we are asking Gaylord for is what percentage of the 244 patients admitted were from Waterbury Hospital and from Bristol Hospital?
Okay, I am, before I issue my, or before I issue an order, is a week sufficient time for the applicant to get their late filing in?
Um, it is, is it, is it, is it conceivable to just request till next Friday instead of one week from today?
Um, you can request next Friday, but that is a state holiday, so.
Oh, I apologize. Then even Thursday, it, it,
Oh, yes, yeah.
That would be helpful for a, a personal conflict I have in the next couple of days that may delay my involvement with my clients here. But thank you, if that Thursday would be okay.
All right. Um, intervenor for Gaylord Hospital is November 10th by 4:30. Good with you?
Yes.
Okay, so what I will do is I'm going to issue an order that the items listed by OHS staff, I'm ordering that those be produced as late files by the applicant and the intervenor for Gaylord, as the case may be, and that they may be produced by, by the close of business on November 10th, 2022. Again, just a reminder that Friday is a state holiday, that Friday is a state holiday, so we will not be in the office on that day. So close of business on the 10th. Ms. Violet, Hiella, can you please memorialize that order in a letter? Yes, all right. And we'll move on to closing arguments. We will start with our closing arguments with the intervenor's attorney, Hospital for Special Care. You can go first.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Nobe and OHS staff. I want to start by pulling back the lens on, you know, the arguments that have been forwarded by applicant that there's no duplication of services for this applicant. You know, the applicant spent a lot of time making distinct distinctions between certification definitions and coverage criteria for LTACs and comparing that to IRFs and IRUs. But as I think Ms. Barbera, LaBarbera said best, what's come out clearly in this hearing and proceeding is there are no bright line tests. These different types of facilities can treat very much, not all, but a bulk of patients can go through those different criteria and certifications. It's a false distinction, that whole IRF versus LTAC that's been stressed. It does not take into account the unique service area that this applicant is stepping into. And they say that, they concede that this isn't appropriate, this isn't San Antonio. This isn't where you look at national historical data. You've got to look at what's happening on the ground. They concede at figure nine and page 76 and 77 of their CON application I'm, I'm reading, as illustrated in figure nine, five general acute hospitals as well as one freestanding IRF hospital near those towns offer inpatient rehabilitation. Those towns are the 23 municipalities that are covered. Mr. Monahan, in his opening remarks may, and has made a couple of distinctions here on, well, nobody else except the two LTACs are intervening. Well, nobody else, including each of those facilities, is supporting this application in any way. And that distinction of just talking about inpatient rehabilitation units and the one existing underutilized IRF in the state, Mount Sinai, and leaving out the two LTACs, that's what makes this entire service area and the state of Connecticut entirely unique. You have the fourth largest LTAC in the country and then you have another large LTAC in Gaylord Hospital, the fourth largest being the Hospital for Special Care. And what has to be conceded is, under the coverage criteria, those LTACs have more latitude, 50/50 choice of taking on patients that can be seen in a IRF-level facility than the IRF itself has, because they can only take 40%. And believe me, we feel at the hospitals for special care that that's exactly what they'll do. Then let me turn, so that's duplication of services, need. Despite Attorney Monahan's admonition at the beginning of the hearing and as the hearing officer rightly noted, OHS can take into account its prior decisions. And in the prior decision, in Encompass, the qualitative, the quantitative need analysis that was used using the national fee for service utilization rates and average length of stay was at finding effect nine of that decision. OHS found that this methodology has not been approved for use in Connecticut. Again, leave that to the discretion of the agency, but that's, that finding of facts already been made. With respect to this alternate need analysis, the one relying on diagnostic DRGs, diagnostic-related groups and diagnosis codes, well, two of the witnesses, despite what Mr. Shindel said, two of the witnesses said, listen, you can't take a diagnosis code and determine what level of care that patient, you know, is appropriate for. But nonetheless, their alternative need methodology looks at the codes that are associated with inpatient rehabilitation facility and assumes with absolutely no basis that 50% would be appropriate for their proposed facility. There's just no, no substantiation. There have been no credible allegations in this entire proceeding of poor outcomes, lack of access to services. What you did have, what you do have is a large national company, owner of 67 or more hospitals across the country, looking at its planning department and saying, listen, we specialize, we're a big company and we specialize in providing rehabilitative services to the biggest payer in the land, Medicare, traditional Medicare. So let's go look at national utilization rates and let's identify areas where they're below that fee for service national utilization rate. They seize upon Connecticut, they don't understand Connecticut, they're not from Connecticut. So in sum, on the need, all they've made is an argument for need that is not supported. There is no need. And MedPAC, that 2021 report makes that clear. The lack of IRF beds in a given locality does not at all equate to any flaws or gaps in care. There's none there. Other criteria. I'm sorry, and I respectfully say, for Ms. Smith at page three of her prefiled testimony, this state that there is no question that this project is financially feasible for the applicant when the 30% partner is up for sale. Again, Attorney Hearing Officer Nobe, we understand that has to be vetted by this agency. But by the same token, if you have a 30% partner, and I am not talking about, Ms. Smith made a, a big deal about the bricks and mortar and building the building. That's all good. Whoever does that, does that. What I'm talking about is if you don't have your community partner and your community partner, Waterbury Health, is no longer able to make the decision for itself to move forward with this application because its purchaser, again, still has to be vetted, already has 24 inpatient rehabilitation beds at Yale New Haven Health and another 16 up at Lawrence Memorial. That won't be a, wouldn't think would be a huge priority of theirs. So there goes the community partnership here. And when you look at that, then what ties does, what, what's supporting all these estimates? And what is supporting all these community health needs assessments? And, and the, the community-based services that this applicant wants to provide? There's, there's no community partner. Nobody else has stepped up here. So with, with respect to that, I again would point respectfully to the MedPAC report. When they talk about the marginal analysis and what, what they call it is a marginal profit analysis, it is and what they call it is marginal profit analysis, it is in the MedPAC report, chapter nine, page 267. And it says, Hearing Officer, that when MedPAC looks at this and they compare a freestanding IRF to a hospital-based inpatient rehabilitation unit in terms of incentive to draw Medicare patients to that facility, it's double when you've got a freestanding IRF. What does that mean practically? It means that that volume's going to come from the IRUs and the LTACs, of which they have no association with any of these, so everything is fair game. Applicants provided evidence, you know, no credible evidence here that the rehabilitation services from its 23-town PSA are not getting the services they need. On the other hand, they've talked about, well, you know, we're a for-profit provider, but we'll provide charity care. Well, let's talk about the existing nonprofit providers here and the impact that volume would cause if it attrits away from the Hospital for Special Care and Gaylord. What about their ability as nonprofit existing organizations to support the services they they provide? Let's think about their charitable mission and the impact on this. For the applicant to talk about a pool of 2,300 to 2,500 healthcare workers when there is the most severe healthcare shortage this state's experienced in decades and say, well, we can take from there, they're not figuring in that this is national shortage. You don't rob Peter to pay Paul. That's not going to happen. You're not going to have therapists and folks leaving low-cost states to come to Connecticut, which is one of the highest-cost states in the country. So let's be realistic about that. The harm of this to the existing delivery system, and in particular, Hospital for Special Care would be profound. Let's think about the services that Ms. Ricky started out talking about. The most vulnerable patients in this state, 80% Medicaid. They need that base of commercial and Medicare cases and patients to sustain that. So if you approve this application, if this agency approves this application where there's no need, where there's clear duplication of services, what happens to one-of-a-kind services like the pediatric autism unit, like the neurobehavioral unit that this organization has stayed its resources towards? What happens there for all these reasons? And many more. I can go down the entire 19A639 criterion. We respectfully ask that this application be denied. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Attorney Cowherd. Now go to Attorney Letty with the intervenor at Gaylord Hospital.
Thank you very much, Hearing Officer Novy. Apart from what Attorney Cowherd has already said, we obviously agree. We respectfully adopt what he's already said about the issues he has addressed. The one issue I want to point out again, which was particular to Mr. Karyaku's testimony, which is his recalculation of the beds that might be necessary in the state of Connecticut. And as he made very clear, what the applicant did was they relied on national Medicare, traditional Medicare numbers, and tried to extrapolate that number and apply it to the state of Connecticut, when the state of Connecticut has a very different reality on the ground. What he did then was he took the, he took Connecticut-specific data about traditional Medicare patients in Connecticut. And that number then, by that point, it drops down to 32 beds. Then he added the more the more critical issue, which is on top of that, adding the Medicare advantage. On top of that, so now you've got both true factors in the state of Connecticut rolled in, and the number of beds that would be necessary is 14. So we're not actually talking about a range between 14 and 32. When you use Medicare Advantage and you use traditional Medicare, you're talking about a need for 14 beds. Those 14 beds already exist in the non-underutilized beds in the state, in the LTACs and the IRUs and IRS that are in existence. There are more than 14 beds at any given time in the state of Connecticut that are not filled. We don't need any additional beds, because those 14, based on the much more appropriate analysis done by Gaylord and by the data that we've been, we've analyzed, demonstrates that the need is at most 14 beds, which can easily be absorbed by the capacity that we already have in the state. And for that additional reason, we would request that the application be denied.
All right. Thank you very much, Attorney Letty. We will now move to the applicant's attorney. Attorney Monahan.
Sir, Novy. I'm actually a bit disappointed in the stereotypical rhetoric that I heard in the initial closing and that was adopted by Gaylord for several reasons. Number one, let me state, as I stated at the beginning, PAM Health and Waterbury Health, the real people sitting around me, both on screen and in person, came into this proceeding applauding the good works of these two intervenors. Second, that does not mean they cannot put forth an application that they think is in the best interests of the state of Connecticut, simply because one of the parties is outside the state of Connecticut. That is a myopic view of the healthcare system that is occurring in this United States. Second, or third, for any attorney to say that the certifications and the distinctions between an LTAC in the Medicare regulations and in, and between the Medicare regulations and the IRF regulations are a blur, go read the law, please. All of us should. They are not blurred. They are clear. They are distinct. They pay differently. Length of stay of 25 days or more results in higher costs than lengths of stay of 13 days or less. Fourth, the rhetoric that PAM Health, because it has been a successful and strong national provider, and there was not one negative point brought out about it in this proceeding by very capable attorneys and parties. The fact that there would be an accusation that this is a profit-hunting mission is appalling in a proceeding like this. This out-of-state entity, and I reiterate this, and I'm sitting next to a gentleman who's the CEO of Waterbury Health, and another gentleman who's the former CEO of Waterbury Health, was generated by a collaboration of people who felt ground level, to use one of the terms in the closing argument, of Connecticut-based data where people are not getting discharged to the right level of care. It is local, and it is now combined with a national partner that has the financial wherewithal to push this forward. So the idea of using a stereotypical slur and a parochial view that Connecticut has to close its doors to an out-of-state entity coming in with the best of intentions, the best evidence that it believed it could supply and stands behind and will answer in the late file questions is disturbing. Aside from the, my own unfortunate reaction to that, I do point out that this all started with a Waterbury Health physician community, physician partnership, Waterbury Health partnership combination with PAM Health. The fact that now, despite the ruling of the hearing officer about the irrelevance of what may happen in a Yale-New Haven transaction down the road, the fact that it took up time in a closing argument despite that ruling says to me that someone thinks they have a crystal ball about what's going to happen and that these good people with these good intentions in Waterbury Health are suddenly going to disappear. There is no basis for that, and it is pure rhetoric. And I think it's out of place. Let's stick to the facts. When we get to the facts, we look at the fact that no one has an explanation why our patients are not getting placed from Waterbury Hospital and the surrounding communities as much as they should be in these apparent vacant beds that are IRF beds. Second, on the need analysis, while in the closing argument, Gaylord tried to water down the testimony of their own witness who said that national data, yes, indeed, can be used to calculate need, is in fact true. And this idea that was put forth by the petitioners that somehow OHS in this lockdown state of Connecticut is not approved to look at national data in combination with local data. There is nothing in the statewide health plan when it comes to chronic disease hospitals or IRFs that prohibits a sound, rational, arbitrary, and fair review of our need analysis with local and national data. And finally, the witnesses here, you, the hearing officer, and anyone else who viewed, sitting on the panel that I see around here or in the public view if they watched, you can judge the credibility of witnesses. There is no doubt in my mind that every single person, whether it be at the Gaylord table, who's an administrator or a clinician, at the Hospital for Special Care table, whether it be an administrator, a strategic officer, or a clinician in the background that we didn't see, and with the people who are sitting here with me and on the screen, every single one of them has patient care as their number one priority. And what we and I, what I urge you to do, what I respectfully request you to do, is you and the panel, take the evidence. Take an open mind to the considerations that we are asking you to consider. Read the law on the distinctions that are really important and that do mean something or they wouldn't exist, and then render a decision. And with that, I will close my remarks. And I will work with my team to submit appropriate late files. Thank you.
All right. I would like to thank everybody for attending our hearing today. It is now 3:44 PM, and I will be adjourning this hearing. The record will remain open until closed by OHS at a later date. Thank you, everybody, for attending and have a nice day. Goodbye.
Thank you.